Welcome to the August 14, 2023, regular session of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. If you have not yet put a parking pass in your dashboard, you will find parking passes at the base of the stairs on the door. Please put one in your dash so you don't get ticketed in the parking lot there. And let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Protem Vaterlos?
Here.
Mayor Big Stick?
Present. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni peoples. I will lead a salute to the flag. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, do you have any meeting notes you want to read?
Sorry, repeat?
Meeting notes?
Oh, for, yes. The meeting is being held in person. We have alternative ways to view and participate in the meeting offered by, on Comcast Channel 26, or by livestream at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. The meeting can also be viewed and participated by Zoom, by the Zoom webinar link provided in the agenda, or by dialing into 1-669-900-6833, webinar ID 81156158241, which is on the agenda as well. Press *9 if you're calling in to raise your hand to request to speak, and *6 to unmute once you're called upon by the last four digits of your phone number.
Thank you very much. One other note, it has been brought to my attention that some email account of mine has been hacked. So if you're receiving requests from me for gift cards, do not respond to it. It sounds like a joke, except I know that at least somebody has already responded as though it were serious, so... So I'm putting that out there now. Mayor, or excuse me, City Attorney, closed session report, please.
No report of legal action.
Thank you very much. And City Attorney, I do want to reconfigure so that we have the public hearing before we go into public comment. Not on the agenda is now the time to bring that up, or should it be after consent?
It should be right before the consent calendar.
So I should bring it up before consent?
Yes.
Okay, well, consent is our next item. We don't have special presentation. My understanding is that our colleague, Jack Brigette, is going to be speaking with the Water District. Out of respect for his time, I'd like to move public comment and the rest of the agenda to after the public hearings, if that's acceptable to the rest of council.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go on with consent, and then we'll begin our public hearing. Any items of consent would a council member like to pull tonight? Okay, if not, we will open it up to public comments on consent. I don't think I have any cards for an item on public consent. And no one's popping up. Emily, do we have anyone on the line who'd like to speak on public consent? Or on a consent calendar? Okay. Jim, did you want to talk on a consent item? Okay, so if there's no public comment for consent, we'll close that and bring it back to council for...
You should, you should check the Zoom now?
Yeah, I asked Emily.
Oh, you did?
No worries. So we're closing public comment. Council, does anyone have a comment, question about any consent item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Consent calendar passes unanimously. The motion was by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Mayor Protem Vaterlos.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to our public hearing, item number 22. Consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval with conditions of coastal development permit, CDP-435-22, permit for site development, PSD-857-22, use permit, UP-130-22, and parking exception, PE-194-22, to demolish and replace portions of the existing North Coast County Water District Headquarters Site and construct a new two-story administrative building and other site improvements at 2400 Francisco Boulevard, APN 016-322-230, file number 2022-007. In finding that North County, North Coast County Water District acting as lead agency has determined the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Proposed action is moved to deny the appeal in a pulled Planning Commission approval of coastal development permit, CDP-435-22, permit for site development, PSD-857-22, use permit, UP-130-22, and parking exception, PE-194-22. In finding that North Coast County Water District acting as lead agency has determined the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, by adopting the resolution included as Attachment A, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A to the resolution. Council members, please disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications you have had.
Yes, I've had ex parte conversations partly as an ad hoc committee, and then I've had discussions with Adrian and with Tom Piccolotti, and Anne. So a lot of people I have talked with at the Water District, almost everybody.
And I visited the Water District and walked around their site and talked to them about the improvements.
I visited the site as well, met with Director Carr and with, ooh, Echo.
Echo.
Echo. And with Board Councilmember Anne DeJarnet. I also have had a phone call with Board Vice Chair Cosgrove.
And same as Councilmember Beckmeyer, I toured the project and met with Adrian Carr and Anne DeJarnet and spoke on the phone with Joshua Cosgrove, and also had some email communications back and forth with Adrian.
Along with Councilmember Beer, as an ad hoc, we've had extensive conversations with members of the Water District Board, some of which related to this project. I've also spoken, former member Piccolotti, Adrian, Jack Brigette, and Josh Cosgrove, and various members of the community. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. And I was going to turn it directly over to planning staff, and we have Ms. Cervantes and Mr. Murdock that will be doing the presentation. And I think we're working on the reverb/echo issue that we're having potentially.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Reverb? No, I'm not hearing it.
Planning Director Murdock will be doubling as IT Director soon.
And Director Murdock, I'm accustomed to the liaison Planning Commission member joining y'all when the topic arises. I do notice Commissioner Wright is in the audience. Should he be seated at the table with you at this time? Welcome, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. The item in front of you today is consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval with conditions to demolish and replace portions of the existing North Coast Water District Headquarters Site and construct a new two-story administrative building and other site improvements at 2400 Boulevard, 2400 Francisco Boulevard. In finding that the North Coast Water District acting as lead agency has determined the project exempt from SEQA. On June 13, the Planning Commission approved the project with conditions. On June 22, North Coast Water District filed an appeal contesting some of the conditions of approval. As background, there are 15 existing on-street parking spaces abutting the project site. The appellant's on-street parking design included a total of 16 spaces with angled parking on Francisco Boulevard, closing the existing driveway on Francisco Boulevard, and adding a third driveway on Claredon Road. As approved, the project would provide 16 on-street spaces. Additionally, the Planning Commission added a condition regarding the potential permanent relocation of the bus stop, which would allow a total of 18 on-street parking spaces abutting the project site by eliminating the proposed no parking on the existing spaces and converting the bus stop area to additional parking. This would result in the greatest number of on-street parking spaces with construction of the project. If a third driveway was allowed and the bus stop is permanently relocated, it would allow for 17 parking spaces abutting the project site. The appellant is contesting five conditions of approval, conditions 11, 12, 21, 24, and 32. Some of these require shorter responses, so I will be discussing them out of order compared to the staff report. The appellant challenges condition number 11, which requires them to submit a request to relocate the temporary safe parking program space adjacent to the project site prior to construction activity. The appellant argues that they do not have the power to move the temporary safe parking space, which is correct, but not relevant to the terms of the condition, which state that the appellant must submit a request to move the space and should not commence construction activities until the alternative space is operational. The appellant's project has a direct impact on the occupant of that space at the time of construction, and thus the appellant is responsible for mitigating the impact of their project. The condition is necessary to make the required findings for approval of a use permit, and thus staff recommends that the City Council reject the grounds of this appeal.
Excuse me, can I just ask you, if you're going out of order, could you make sure that we know where you are and that the public also knows where you are so we can be sure to follow along? Thank you.
The appellant is requesting condition number 21 to be revised to require patch and pavement and paving and repairs instead of the grind and overlay, overlay existing asphalt to the limits of all utilities or street centerline, whichever is greater. This is basis three in the staff report. The condition is placed on the project because of the proposed utilities will drop the pavement condition index to a poor rating, and it's based on the road conditions. This is the standard condition of approval placed on all private development, including the city Civic Center Campus Facility Project on Francisco Boulevard. As previously stated, the appellant is responsible for mitigating the impacts of their project. For basis five, which is condition number 32, the appellant wants condition number 32 to be removed, claiming that it is outside the scope of the project. However, municipal regional permit C3 requirements state that the project altering 50% or more of impervious surface of an existing development that was not subject to C3 provisions must be included in the treatment system design. The appellant will state that they do not trigger this requirement. However, the C3 Development Review Checklist submitted on June 2022 did not have a revised first sheet. The page two of the checklist that was submitted with the second submittal states that there are 17,507 square feet of total impervious surface area, which is 49.7% of the site. Additionally, after the submittal, there were additional changes to the project which created more impervious surface area within the corporate yard that was not accounted for in the C3 checklist. The site plan from September of 2022 shows a new trash enclosure near the western property line. Based on staff's calculation, the total impervious surface replaced and created is about 51%. The appellant's project is disturbing over 50% of the site and thus triggers the need to cover, to put a cover over the existing fuel station. The appellant is requesting condition number 22 to be removed. This is basis four in the staff report. The condition would prohibit the construction of a third driveway on Claredon Road. Staff is in full agreement that the proposed recycled water service is a benefit to the community. The concern is with the proposed number of driveways and their proximity to the intersection. A secondary concern was the removal of on-street parking. On June 12, staff met with SAM Trans and the appellant to discuss the permanent relocation of the bus stop. Staff was unable to approve the relocation during that meeting as a detailed review is needed, as well as approval from other agencies, including Caltrans and SAM Trans. But staff recommended that the Planning Commission add a condition number 51, which would allow for the permanent relocation of the Claredon Bus Stop. Staff was informed that the applicant has engaged Caltrans, but a final approval to relocate the bus stop has not been obtained. The appellant is requesting condition number 12 to be removed. This is basis number two in the staff report. Condition 12 prohibits angled parking on all project frontages. The appellant argues that angled parking is safe, that the city reached its conclusions on outdated and applicable studies, that the city used the incorrect road classification, and that the city improperly classified Francisco Boulevard as a bike route, and that angled parking is consistent with the city's general plan. Staff's assessment is that angled parking on Francisco Boulevard is unsafe. Head-in angled parking, as proposed by the appellant, is associated with a higher rate of collisions due to the blind reverse needed to exit. Head-in angled parking is particularly hazardous on Francisco Boulevard due to the direct connection to Highway 1, which has higher traffic volumes and speeds. The appellant claims that the city used outdated and inapplicable studies to reach its conclusions, which is without grounds. The city's traffic consultant, Fear and Pierce, conducted a peer review of the appellant's sandis report. Fear and Pierce's report relied on expert knowledge and industry resources, including the 2001 report from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Fear and Pierce found that there are safety concerns with angled parking at this location that were confirmed by the applicant's own traffic engineer during the Planning Commission hearing. The appellant's traffic report did not provide an analysis, an analysis of how the installation of an always-stop sign will improve the safety of angled parking. The report only determined that the design is adequate from a circulation standpoint, not from a traffic collision standpoint. It should be noted that the always-stop sign was prohibited by the Planning Commission and not a condition the appellant is attempting to remove. So they are requesting allowance of the angled parking without their proposed stop sign. The appellant states that angled parking is safe because it exists on other city streets, but that alone is not sufficient evidence. In fact, staff found that city streets with existing angled parking are more likely to be on the city's high injury network per the local roadway safety plan. The appellant provided several examples. The most comparable, based on traffic volumes, traffic speeds, and street function, is Palmetto Avenue near Manor Drive. This area contains a high concentration of fatal and serious injury collisions. The appellant also claims that safety improvements, such as sensors and backup cameras, make angled parking safe. But the appellant provided no data to demonstrate that most vehicles in Pacifica have these features. There was also no data to support the claim that drivers exiting head-in angled parking and using this safety improvement will have sufficient time to prevent a collision with the average speeds of drivers traveling on Francisco Boulevard. In their appeal letter, the appellant references the U.S. Department of Transportation Guidelines on On-Street Motor Vehicles and Bike Wake Selection Process and highlights the drawbacks of parallel parking. But that same source states that the main challenge with head-in angled parking is the blind reverse into traffic, increasing crash risk. The appellant also claims that the city incorrectly classified Francisco Boulevard. However, the road classification is irrelevant to staff's conclusion that angled parking is not safe. Staff's conclusion is based on the risk to motorists and cyclists. Cyclists currently use Francisco Boulevard in the angled parking configuration creates a hazard for cyclists due to the blind reverse to exit. The project site is also within the Sharp Park specific plan, which is a priority development area. This increases the opportunity for the city to receive funding and make improvements to the multimodal transportation in the area, including new bike lanes. Additionally, the city's 1980 local coastal plan and the 2040 general plan both encourage alternatives to automobile transportation and safe street planning. The appellant has not provided any information or analysis that demonstrates that angled parking is safe, does not create a hazardous or inconvenient vehicle traffic pattern, and is not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of those people working or residing in the neighborhood. Condition 12 prohibits angled parking, and it is necessary to make the findings for the development permits necessary for this project. It is necessary to find the project in compliance with the municipal code, the local coastal plan, and the general plan. For these reasons, staff recommends that the City Council reject the basis of the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's determination regarding the appellant's proposed angled parking on Francisco Boulevard. Staff recommends that the City Council move to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission approval. Thank you. I am available for questions, as well as engineering staff.
Okay. Thank you for that report. I'm going to take the liberty of asking the first question. And I think I'll probably be asking this question as many times as I possibly can, in every way I can, because it seems to be kind of a main bone of contention. I, there's two issues that I've identified strongly in this appeal, but, you know, there's kind of this milieu between various city documents addressing bicycle plans that may or may not exist in that area, and some hand-wringing over which traffic document is best suited to answer the question of diagonal parking. So to my mind, before jumping into that milieu, I'm trying to establish, as in the simplest terms possible, whether or not sticking diagonal parking there is safe. That's the number one question on my mind coming into this room tonight. My hunch is it will keep, continue to be the number one question on my mind up to the moment I finally press the button. So staff, if you could take a first crack, because I'm fairly certain I'll be asking this question many times in as many ways as I can. In the simplest terms possible, why should I think that it is either safe or unsafe to put parallel parking in that spot?
Mayor, do you mean diagonal parking or parallel parking?
Diagonal parking. My brain is crazy right now.
Thank you. Sarah, can we put up the PowerPoint again? Thank you.
So Mayor, we're going to invite Deputy Director and City Engineer Roland Yip Up to explain the analysis from the Public Works Department related to the proposed angled parking configuration for the project. related to the proposed angled parking configuration for the project.
Welcome, Engineer Yip, and I encourage you to keep it as simple for my poor, addled brain as possible. I am not a traffic engineer, nor my colleagues, last I checked. And so I'm looking for the simplest way that I can possibly draw a conclusion one way or the other. So if in simple terms you can tell me in your expert opinion why this spot is safe or not, safe for diagonal parking, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mayor Bigs Dick, before Mr. Yip begins, I would, he can speak from the podium, but afterwards, Roland, why don't you come over here and take a seat here since the question will probably be repeated in the future, and you can be up here. Thanks.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works/City Engineer. And in our opinion and recommendation against the angled parking is due to, as Stephanie has mentioned a little bit, the limited visibility while you are backing out onto oncoming traffic. And as we previously mentioned, and there's questions regarding the classification of this street. So regardless of the classification, we have cited some numbers from Ashto. This is, that shows that regardless of the classification of the street, angled parking is determined to be unsafe. So this location, whether it's a collector or arterial, it will be relatively unsafe in this location. And the most comparable street in the city with angled parking, among the numerous locations that were brought up, is Palmetto and Manor. And on Palmetto, similarly to the dynamics of the city, a lot of the traffic runs north to south. So if there's traffic on the Highway One, it will get diverted onto our northbound, southbound streets, which Francisco and Palmetto are similar, and also has connections to the highway. So that's why we felt the Palmetto was comparable, and Palmetto is on high injury network, whereas Francisco is not. So we do have some data regarding the angled parking within our own city, that the collisions, the increased collisions that are within our own city. And just citing the Fear and Pierce reports, and from the Oregon Department of Transportation, as well as Ashto, the increased number of collisions that occur because of the angled parking.
Do we have a member of Fear and Pierce on the call tonight, by the way? Or do we have a member in the audience?
We do. Ingrid, she is with Fear and Pierce, and she's available to answer any technical questions as well.
Ingrid, because I do not know your last name, you might want to come a little closer, because at some point I'm sure we will be asking you questions this evening. And in point of fact, do you have any follow-up information you want to add in terms of angled parking and why we should regard it apparently as unsafe? It's a tag-team effort tonight.
Hi, Ingrid Bayous from Fear and Pierce. Thank you for having me. I would add to that, that research has shown, and research in the industry has shown that when you convert on-street parking from parallel to angled parking, the risk of crashes increases by more than fifty percent. And so that is the key, and that is regardless of the type of roadway that we're talking about, or any other conditions.
Okay, because to my mind, and again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems like the difference between arterial and a collector might have something to do with the speeds by which a car is going down the road. And so as a layperson, it occurs to me that, well, if the speed isn't as great, then if there's a visibility issue, maybe some of that is alleviated by virtue of the fact that somebody would have more time to see a car coming, or if not, the damage wouldn't be as great. So without bringing into this arterials and collectors, because again, there's a lot of questions that brings up that I do not know whether or not are pertinent to this, and that's a part of what I'm trying to figure out, is in the simplest, most terms, have an understanding. What I did hear you say is accidents in general go up by fifty-one percent, no matter what kind of road it is, because there is limited visibility when you are engaging in parallel parking.
Yes.
Is there-
That's what the research has shown.
Do you want to talk about the research at all?
Yeah, so I think he mentioned a couple of the studies that have shown that. And there's other studies that I, right now, would not be able to cite all of them. But he mentioned the Oregon DOT, Ashto, as two very credible sources in our industry. And there's other studies that have been done that are just well-known in the safety industry that have shown that risk.
Okay. I'm sure I'll be asking more again over the course of the night. So I have now a simple understanding from my perspective that over fifty-one percent consistently, no matter what type of road it is, because of limited visibility. Is my simple understanding comporting with what your complex understanding is?
Yep.
Okay. The other big picture item to my mind is the third driveway. Staff.
Can you, before you go on to that question, can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Roland, you said that the classification of the street, regardless of the classification of the street, can you please confirm the classification of the street for me?
So regarding the classification, there is in our PTAP management where we have our assessment of our pavement and the pavement condition indexes in the city. So according to the Streetsaver management system, the classification is an arterial. It's also an arterial on the Federal Highway Administration. The CRS California Road System is also classified as an arterial. So there is some classifications within our general plan, classifying it as a collector. But regardless of, within the general plan and the uses of the general plan, the collector and arterial system still recommend multimodal uses for this street. So for the purpose of the general plan, that was the purpose of the general plan and that classification. For the purposes of our PTAP, the classifications are used for the roadway reconstruction treatments. So if it was an arterial versus a collector, that means it has higher volumes, therefore it needs thicker sections of pavement. So that's where those classifications are used. And engineering would refer to, a lot of times, would refer to our PTAP and our Streetsaver management system for our classifications, because we are the ones doing pavement management in the city.
Thank you.
I have a few more questions, too. What's a typical speed on an arterial versus a collector, though? And there is a speed limit sign that I've noticed on Francisco, because speed obviously impacts accidents also.
So for the speed limit on Francisco, the speed limit that's posted is twenty-five miles per hour. I'm going to refer to the applicant's traffic study on one, the higher ranges of the speeds on this road, because they use something higher than twenty-five miles per hour in order to do their warrants for the stop sign. So Stephanie has pulled it up, and it shows that sixty-eight percent of drivers above the, drive above the posted speed limit, and the speeds were forty to forty-five miles per hour on Francisco.
So that might indicate we need some traffic calming measures or so to bring those down. And I have read that angled parking is, it can be considered a traffic calming measure. Is that, is that correct?
I'd like to clarify the traffic study and that recommendation and summary in that traffic study. So I will read it verbatim. It says, "Maintaining the twelve-foot-wide travel lanes and installing a center lane stripe will promote traffic calming and encourage vehicles to travel at slower speeds between Brighton and Claridon Road intersections." So it doesn't explicitly say angled parking here. They could have wrote angled parking. So I read it to say that if you maintain a twelve-foot lane with a center line stripe, that's the calming traffic measure that they're recommending to maintain here. It does not explicitly say that angled parking is a traffic calming measure.
Can I follow up on that, Roland? When you say twelve-foot lane, are you talking about from the end of the parking places to the center line?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the studies that you're quoting. I guess we don't, do you have any information on what data was used for the Ashto study? I mean, what types of roads, whether there were bicycles? Is there any data about the difference between angled parking accidents with bikes versus cars?
I would have to defer that to Ingrid, if she has that information.
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I would need to go back and read the study again in detail.
Okay. And then I just wanted to quote from, and follow up with a question on packet page five twelve about the other Oregon study, where it says, "The researchers concluded that while," let me make sure I'm reading the right thing, sorry. "The researchers concluded that while angled parking has clearly a higher crash rate and frequency, it is more likely due to the increased activity of parking rather than the characteristics of either type of parking." And then we can talk about the parking in the area as separate, but to me, that reads as more people use angled parking because it's easier. I mean, I know my kids don't park on parallel parking because it's hard to maneuver. And that, so it seems to be saying that it's based on increased use, that there's more accidents, not that one is more than the other necessarily. Can you confirm that?
Councilmember Bowles, yeah, so the study does mention that, as you said, it's likely due to the increase of parking rather than the characteristics. So essentially, what it's saying is that angled parking, you can fit more parking spaces in that same space than the parallel parking, and thus there's more parking available. Because there's more parking available, it's used more, and so there is an increase in the higher rates of crash. And so that's essentially what's being proposed on Francisco Boulevard right now. They're trying to increase the number of on-street parking spaces there, which will increase the chance of collisions on Francisco Boulevard if the angled parking is in place.
Right, but that's, okay, yeah, it's just frequency. It's not based on the type of parking.
And I think-
I think the bikes are a different question, and I've got a lot more questions about that.
Right, I understand that. And good evening, Council Planning Director Christian Murdock. You know, I understand that statement in the report to me. Vehicular collisions, not related necessarily, or limited only to bicycle-related collisions. But I think regardless of the causation, the outcome is the same, unsafe conditions or less safe conditions. And so I think that's been the focus of the staff's analysis in that regard. Whatever the causation, the condition is less safe than with a parallel parking condition.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm gonna, I need a minute.
With the angled parking, say I am driving a big truck. The sidewalk access is very small there, according to the pages I'm looking at. And if I'm in a big truck, I might go over the sidewalk with the front of my vehicle, thereby limiting that sidewalk even more.
Which page are you looking at?
Five, wait a minute, five seventy-three, I think. Any of the pages that have the angled parking. There, the last one.
I know we're not deliberating here, but I did have a conversation about that with Adrian Carr. And the way to stop that is to put in wheel stops, and those are typically found in most angled parking spaces or straightened spaces.
No, but not necessarily, because if you have a-
So the point is well-taken that we are not to deliberation yet.
We're not deliberating, yeah.
But if you have a specific question for staff, now is a good time.
Does that make, I can make it a question. Does the angled parking make the sidewalks much smaller so that people in wheelchairs don't have as easy an access?
Councilmember Vitarus, so we originally did bring this up to the applicant, and this was from the Fear and Pierce traffic study, that the overhang from the vehicles potentially could reduce the width of the sidewalk. The Water District has responded back and said that they are willing to move the project limits further in in order to allow us to have a five-foot-wide sidewalk.
And Councilmember, Mayor Potem Vatalas, while wheel stops could be installed, they're a stationary feature. And so they may not accommodate vehicle types of all sizes in the same fashion. And so while it may work for a typical vehicle, potential would remain for a particularly large vehicle to encroach into the sidewalk, even with the adjustment that Mr. Yip mentioned.
Thank you.
Can I ask, other than Manor and Palmetto, and I can talk more about that later, because I know that intersection very well, are there other areas in the city with angled parking that were identified in the high injury network?
Councilmember Bowles, yes, I can answer that. One second, let me just get to these slides. Yeah, so the city did look, the appellant actually provided several examples of angled parking on existing streets. So the city did look at all those examples that were provided. We determined that out of all the streets that were provided, only two were not on the high injury network, and that would be Bill Drake Way. Yes, well, so this is Manor Drive, which is on the high injury network. Palmetto Avenue, as was previously mentioned, is on the high injury network. The other street that is not on the high injury network is Beach Boulevard, just down the street from here. And then Claridon Road, as well, is on the high injury network. All of these are streets with angled parking.
It is on?
It is, yes.
So Rockaway is also on the high injury network?
I would have to check out the figure exhibit.
I'm sorry, stay on this slide for a minute, because I'm looking at the, these maps are so tiny, and this was part of our complaint when we saw this before. But it's hard to tell if the injury is actually happening where there's diagonal parking or further down. So I can't make that determination from this slide. Perhaps you've got more information.
Yeah, so this slide shows the figure of the collisions, but we also have a figure that was on the other side that shows all of the roads that are on the high injury network. So this is small, we can try to zoom in, but there's, all the red is, there are streets that are on the high injury, and you can see on that, although it is small, it does show Manor, Palmetto, as well as Claridon Road down the bottom.
But if you've decided that one section of a street is a high injury, it looks like you've, sorry, made the whole street red, right? So that's not really giving specific information about what the injuries are at the parking areas. I'm having trouble making the correlation. I think the term, maybe I'm wrong, is street segments? Like, is there a more refined? And I remember when we had that report, we were saying the same thing, right?
It's this map that I, is it possible to see this map zoomed in? And I asked for that before with the road safety presentation that we had, because that same map was on in that presentation. And that would be really helpful for me to understand, because that is not showing me what my eyes would like to see.
City Clerk Coffey, are you able to open the slide and zoom in to expand the size of that visual?
Am I have your other questions while they're waiting?
By all means.
Oh, not for me, but if I was Sarah, I wouldn't want a bunch of people waiting for me to find a slide.
I have some more questions about the bicycles, I guess, if you want to move to that. Because I think that's part of the, for me, that's a big part of the issue. Sorry, I shouldn't be deliberating. So I-
So I, the bicycle pedestrian master plan that was approved by council in 2020 does not show Francisco, you know, as a future bike route. And I went back to read that and look at the text, and it described this as a long-term vision. So I guess I'm, can you explain a little bit more why we think Francisco should be a bike route when it's not identified as such in the master plan?
When the pedestrian bicycle master plan was created in 2020, the Sharp Park area has not yet been, become a priority development area. So had it been, then, you know, it would have been under consideration for us to make it more accessible for multi-modal. And your comment about that whether it's a living document, I mean, we are constantly going to have more bike routes that are changed around the city. So whether or not it's on there today, I mean, it's on our general plan that we want to have multi-modal within the city.
That's right. And to add on to that, you know, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan is prioritizing certain projects, right, which helps for pursuing funding and guiding certain decision-making. But as an overarching policy matter, as mentioned, the general plan requires what we call complete streets. So requiring development projects, for example, to ensure that their design incorporates all modes of transportation, not simply vehicles, which has been the tradition for many decades. So that includes ensuring the routine accommodation, is the language used in our general plan, of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And so in this instance, you know, the staff's analysis is that the construction of angled parking, for example, would almost certainly preclude future construction of bicycle lanes, which would not result in the routine accommodation of multiple modes of transportation. And so it's really with that overarching general plan policy that we are trying to implement the intent of long-term vision for all modes of transportation being accommodated.
I haven't looked at bike path master plans for other cities, but I was looking at the map of San Francisco and their bike routes, and it's not every street that has bikes on it. They have a grid so that, you know, they alternate, and so that you can get from one place to another. But, I mean, does not having a bike path mean that we're not meeting the multimodal definition? Is there a stronger definition that you can explain to me that would say that every street has to have those facilities?
I think the answer to your question is no. Every street does not need to have a dedicated bike lane or be mapped in a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. With that said, the general plan has demonstrated by policy that even at the finer grain, right, for those sites that are not called out in a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, for instance, the efforts still must be made for the routine accommodation of multiple modes of transportation. And so to take a key project element and to preclude future bike lanes, in staff's assessment, would not be consistent with the general plan. Similarly, even without a dedicated bike lane, right, to your point about identification in a bicycle pedestrian master plan for a particular type of improvement, it would still result in a less safe accommodation of bicycles operating in the vehicle travel lanes with the angled parking design. And so sort of from those two angles, whichever the perspective is, it would not uphold that general plan policy related to multimodal accommodation.
Okay, thank you. And as a follow-up question, so I had met with a member of Public Works on Friday to discuss the possibility of bike lanes on Francisco, just in terms of the street itself. And so we were answered in our staff questions that the right-of-way is 50 feet, the street width is 32, and staff was suggesting that we could add separate bike lanes so that they would not be in the path of travel if we went to 10-foot travel lanes with five and four-foot bike lanes on the road. So is this something that we would consider if we were to put bike lanes here in the future?
That's correct, Councilmember Bowles. That's the configuration we were considering, is five-foot bike, five-foot slash four-foot bike lanes, and then reducing the travel lanes to 10 feet, and that would be a traffic calming measure to reduce speeds at this location is by narrowing lane widths. And yes, this would be within the 50-foot right-of-way, and it would be something that's doable because of the landscaping that is on the east side of Francisco Boulevard.
Okay. And then just to follow up on that, I know as part of the roadway safety plan that we just reviewed at the last meeting on Crespey, instead of having two lanes of bikes, you know, in opposite directions that went with the flow of traffic, we put the two lanes together. So would it not be possible to put the two bike lanes on the east side of Francisco so that they were not, where there's no buildings and no driveways, it seems like that would be a safer place for bikes, to have two-way travel on the one side of the street? Is that a possibility?
And just so you know, I also had that question, so thank you for asking.
I was gonna say-
I'm gonna say that a lot, because I really did have that question. And also, can it also be a share-o? So that's my other.
With regards to the question about the two-way bikeway on one side and putting it on the side that's not fronting the site, the biggest difficulty with, or challenge with something like that is access to that bike facility, right? If someone is biking on a perpendicular street and trying to access to it, that connection becomes really difficult, and you don't have any land uses that people are trying to access on that side of the street. So from a kind of providing the most benefit for that facility, you're not, like cyclists who are using that facility are not getting direct access to any land uses. They would really just be going north-south, and then those connections to the land uses that they're trying to access would be difficult. The, honestly, major concern I would have from, would be cyclists trying to access land uses mid-block, and so when they're halfway down the block, then they're trying to cross two lanes of travel from that two-way bike facility that's on the opposite side of the street from where they want to be going.
Well, that's interesting, because we didn't talk about that at Crespey, and there's a school across the streets.
If I may interject at this point, it strikes me that we're talking about hypothetical bike lanes that I, I'm unclear, are any of what we're speaking about a bike lane that appears in any plan we have on the books at this time?
So the bike lanes that, is not on the plans for, that's in the books on Francisco at this time. But, you know, it is on the general plan, and the introduction of this angled parking would prevent any future bike lanes behind the angled parking if we were to want to put it on the west side.
And again, I want to try and simplify some things when you say it's on the general plan, and I appreciate you've already answered this, but I'm trying to simplify. When you say it's on the general plan, what does that mean?
So the general plan designates the classification of a collector or arterial street, and Francisco is designated as those streets on the general plan. And for those designations, it designates that all uses of modes of transportation are equal and none shall dominate, so pedestrian, bicyclists, and vehicular travel should all be accessible. So it has to have multimodal transportation on that street.
Do you happen to have that policy number from the general plan readily available?
City Clerk Coffee, can you pull up the PowerPoint presentation, please?
Mayor Big Dick, before we just change the slide, because City Clerk Coffee did a lot of detective work and found a more blown-up version from the local roadway safety plan one, zoomed in, showing the Clarindon extending out to Beach Boulevard, that segment, as red. So we just wanted to show that before we get rid of it, because it was hard to-
Wait, so before you get rid of that, can you go, within this document, to where it actually showed where the collisions were? Because, again, this is just that the whole street is highlighted if there's, if it's in the injury network, but it doesn't really show where the accidents have happened.
And for me, I can't see that, because it says Francisco Boulevard Giant on top, so that's, I can't see how far the red line goes down on this map. Just my eyes.
The, well, perhaps-
It appears to me the red line that's beneath Francisco is Oceana Boulevard.
Yeah, that's Oceana.
The label for Francisco is offset slightly to the right of Francisco, but Francisco Boulevard itself is not shown in red on this map.
And, and again, we'd have to search in this presentation, this is Public Works' presentation from the local roadway safety plan from the July 10th meeting, so we can search for that other map, but I don't know what page that's on, on the presentation.
And so while we're bringing up the graphic, I'll start by pointing specifically to circulation element policy CII-III from the general plan. Talks about complete streets in the development, in the project development process, and it includes, that language, as I mentioned earlier, the quote, "routine accommodation", end quote, of bicyclists and pedestrians in planning and design for projects, and staff's assessment, again, that the construction of angled parking would preclude that routine accommodation of bicycles in particular. In addition, there's a table in the general plan, a city engineer, Yip, was mentioning, Table 5-3 from the circulation element. These boxes, squares, and Xs talk about different levels of accommodation of the mode of transportation on a particular type of roadway, really material to tonight's project discussion. If you look at arterials or collectors, right, which is at question in the hearing tonight and in the appeal, you can see the circle is incidental, but the square is accommodated, and the dark black square is dominant. You can see that for both arterials and collectors, bicycles and pedestrians must be accommodated along with automobiles. And so none of those modes are intended to have priority, but they are required to be accommodated in those roadway segments. And so that, combined with the complete streets policy of the general plan, really provides an overarching framework for thinking about transportation in relation to development projects, ensuring that no project feature is going to preclude the routine accommodation of any of those required modes of transportation.
And if you could go back to the slide showing CII-III, please? Thank you. Councilmember Beer, did you have a-
I do. So can bike and pedestrians be accommodated on an arterial or collective street with a share-o? I mean, not the pedestrian, obviously, they need a sidewalk, but bicycles. Would a share-o fulfill that accommodation?
So increasingly, you know, and even from bike coalitions, people are encouraging, you know, local agencies to put in something better than share-o's, and even for share-o's, they've kind of gone up and increased, you know, some more traffic calming measures, and they call those bike boulevards. You know, share-o's were class three, and now they went like a class three B. So it's becoming more and more a preference for bicyclists to, you know, of course, people would prefer biking in a bike lane versus sharing the row with a share-o. Even if you were to, we still would not be able to introduce a share-o if the angled parking were put, because the visibility onto, would still be prevented from the angled parking, and they would still be backing up onto an oncoming bicyclist with that limited visibility. So the safety concerns would be the same whether or not there's a bike lane there or there's a share-o.
Thank you, Roland. And I'm sorry, so I'm just thinking of Palmetto, which I bike down regularly, and I definitely prefer to be off the road. So as we expanded our bike path, the master plan, the side residential streets, would those also have shared bikes? Because it seems easy to go down Palmetto and then come across the residential streets, which have less traffic on them also. So I don't know how those are classified, they're obviously not, I guess, local roads, is that right? And are bikes, are bikes too typical on local roads also?
So for local roads, there are class three bike share-o's on our bike path master plan. So in a lot of the, I mean, the streets, the widths are built out the way they were, and in order to get a full-on five-foot bike lane in there, really drastic changes would be needed to be done. You would need to do one-way streets or remove parking, which would be challenged in order to implement. So to answer the question, yes, local streets would have share-o's.
Okay, thank you.
Not to belabor it, but could you, one more time, just give a quick definition of what complete streets means and why these general plan policies are something we might consider tonight?
So in the general plan glossary, there's a description of complete streets as a term. It says, "Complete streets are designed and operated to enable safe, attractive, and comfortable access and travel for all users, including motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, children, seniors, individuals with disabilities, and users of public transportation." So taking that as a framework and a concept, applying the table to help delineate between different road classifications, recognizing that for purposes of bicycle and pedestrian accommodation, there's no functional difference in the general plan between arterial and collector street, and then drilling down to the specific implementing policy in the circulation element for development projects to ensure the routine accommodation of those various modes of travel. You have multiple points in the general plan that point to ensuring that there's no project characteristic, for example, that would preclude the routine and safe accommodation of any of those prescribed modes of transportation.
Thank you very much. Council, do we have any further questions on parallel parking at this time?
One more, sorry, I just thought of.
Ah, diagonal, excuse me. I'm gonna keep doing that.
So I've seen in some cities where they're actually putting the bicycle paths next to the sidewalk and then the parking outside that. And that seems safer to me. I mean, with, even with, what's the regular parking on? Even with parallel parking, there's always the danger of somebody opening their door without looking that's going to whack somebody off their bicycle, right? Also, most cars just have one driver, so, I mean, is that, is that possible, that if we did a separate bike path, it could be inside the parking?
So it's definitely more common to have parallel parking be the buffer between a bike lane. You know, more research we would have to do in terms of whether or not it's done with angled parking. Some of the overhang is also still a concern here, overhanging onto the bike lane now instead of a sidewalk. The other concern here would be if we wanted to do a bobout at that location, you would need to do a cutout across the bobout, and that would prevent bio-retention areas, and also there's a conflict zone between pedestrians and bicyclists. So those are some of the challenges. We haven't looked at that design that closely yet, but it has been done with parallel parking a lot more common.
And even in that circumstance, Councilmember Bowles, that wouldn't be the angled parking arrangement that's proposed and hypothetically would be constructed if the project were approved, as the applicant, or as the appellant, rather, has proposed it. So it's a hypothetical that would perhaps require multiple reconfigurations of that parking design to shift it in the manner that you're describing. So it could add cost and complexity to that hypothetical future project as well.
Commissioner Wright, I seem to recall more robust discussion around the third driveway than I did around diagonal parking. But if you'd be so kind, do you have any recollections from planning commission that you want to share regards to deliberations around diagonal parking? And we definitely need a longer table.
Good evening, honorable council members. My role tonight here is to be liaison with you between the planning commission and you guys. The commission- The commission gathered input from multiple sources prior to consideration of any motions. We had a bunch of public input. We heard a presentation from the petitioner. We had a presentation from staff as well. After that process, the commission went through a lengthy question-and-answer period where the commission had multiple questions for the petitioner, who had additional time to have additional input and additional clarifications into what their concept was. We also questioned staff quite a bit on a lot of these very same issues. After that process, we went into deliberation where we tried to prioritize and figure out what was important. Some of those considerations were things such as parking, such as safety. There was a number of those kind of considerations that were talked about. We considered a number of different conditions to be applied to this project. Eventually, there was a motion that was made and seconded, and then that condition passed. All those conditions passed, as in the documents. Does that answer your question, or do you need further clarification?
Well, I'm wondering if you have any particular recollection of dialogue around the parallel parking issues specifically?
A number of them, and it seemed to me that safety was the big concern. And I can only speak for myself, because I'm not one of the other commissioners. You know, it seemed like it was set up as there was two conflicting opinions, and there was consideration of those two conflicting opinions, and it appears that commission sided with staff's opinion on that matter.
Okay, thank you very much.
For Sarah and Kevin, I, I found the page in the, in the last agenda, it's on page 680. It has the collision distribution.
Would any council member like to ask a question not having to do with parallel parking, or should I ask another general overview question as I did to begin the last conversation?
I have a question.
Please do.
I, at the risk of opening another whole issue, and if this isn't germane to the issues at hand, City Attorney, please tell me. I would like to have a grounding or some reminder about the EPA, I think it is, Equity Priority Development Area, or something like that. I forgot the exact name. It has the green hash marks in the Sharp Park area, because it seems to me that overlays with this project. And it was mentioned in one of the slides that Mr. Yip was speaking on, and then we, the city clerk went and looked for another slide, so I didn't ask the question at that time. But can you remind me of how that pertains or doesn't to this particular appeal?
Sure. Good evening, Councilmember Beckmeyer. I think you're referring to Priority Development Area, or PDA.
Yeah.
That's a nomenclature through the Association of Bay Area Governments, or, you know, region-wide planning agency. It's a tool that they offer to local governments to designate particular areas within their jurisdictions where development and investment is intended to be focused. And so the city has a couple of different PDAs, the Sharp Park area being one of them. And it's a, it's a model through which regional transportation and planning funding can be directed to help prioritize those kind of regional planning priorities, like infill development, affordable housing, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and greenhouse gas emissions through funding projects such as bicycle lane roadway retrofits and other projects to improve pedestrian and roadway safety. And so it's not in and of itself a particular reason not to allow angled parking, for example, but it's another layer on which to understand that through the city council's designation of a priority development area in this location, general plan policies, Sharp Park specific plan policies, all aimed at improving safe, non-vehicular transportation, walkability, bikability, that precluding the construction of a dedicated bike lane, for example, by allowing angled parking, wouldn't fit in staff's assessment in with that framework. And so we just mentioned that as another layer in this conversation.
Thank you, and if I may, one other clarifying question. On the map that we were seeing a minute ago that showed the angled parking, there is an indicator that says, electronic charging stations, but I couldn't tell if there's one or two, or all of them, or how many there were. And, and I don't remember that point when I was listening to the Planning Commission meeting, so in terms of your mention of greenhouse gas reduction, can you clarify that for me? And right this second, you don't have to, if you have to dig for it, that's fine.
Sure, we'll try to promptly find the site plan and confirm the number for you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up? I'll wait.
No, they're looking, they're gonna look.
I think I was just curious, because you did mention the Priority Development Areas, and then I, I was just curious if it's an equity priority area? I don't think it is, is it? Is that, is that area, like the Sharp Park specific plan, is it an equity priority area? That's what it's called, or equity focus area, or equity priority community?
I'm not familiar with that term.
Okay. It's part of O'Ban.
So I don't know if staff's been able to find the roadway safety plan with the, with the collisions.
Councilmember Bowles, are you referring to a packet page from the July 10th?
I am.
Agenda? Is that what that is referring to?
Page 680.
Okay. We can try to locate the agenda packet and that page, packet page 660, did you say?
680.
680.
Oh, it was, excuse me, Councilmember Beer. To answer your question, equity priority area, I got a confirmation from Ingrid here. It was a name change, it was a communities of concern, that might be a term that everyone is more familiar with, but the name was just changed from communities of concern.
They, thank you. I, I sit on the Bike and Pedestrian Commission, and so they use that term a lot in their, in the grants. So if it's switched out, I haven't seen that yet, but I'll look for it, thank you.
And, and just, I mean, on the local roadway safety plan, this area is in an equity priority area. That was a, a green hash overlay.
Can you repeat that, please?
Oh, yes. So on packet page 685 of our last agenda, so just five pages after, there's an overlay of an equity priority area on the roadway safety map. That's a green hatch and includes most of the northern end of Pacifica and all of Sharp Park.
Thank you.
It's gonna take us a minute to download the packet from July 10th and open that up, so if there's other questions in the meantime.
I brought it up, I see the green hash. So I was gonna start heading toward Engineer Yip, did you have a comment you want to make?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Big Stick. I just wanted to mention the fiscal significance of being a PDA or a EPA here, is that it opens up, and as mentioned in the previous Planning Commission meeting as well, is that it opens up a lot more grant opportunities in the area. So although, you know, this would be a pretty long stretch of bike lanes and include potentially some grading and landscaping area, it will open us up to grant opportunities to be able to build out a bike lane in this area. And again, this PDA, it wasn't designated as a PDA when we first did, when the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan was done in 2020, so it would have affected whether or not we would have had, you know, a designation for bike lanes in this area.
Thank you.
And again, I don't want to belabor projects that may or may not be in the future, except for insofar as to say that they comport with the general plan policies that we have written in the general plan. And I see that there is a map in front of us.
Yeah, and this, this is what I was trying to understand and point out, and again, it would sure, sure be nice if, if it was something that was zoom-in-able, so the big yellow dots weren't so big and covered all the streets. But it looks to me like on Clarendon Road, the yellow dot is closer to Francisco and not where we have the existing diagonal parking. But perhaps you can opine on that.
It must be a data table that goes with that.
It wasn't in the report, unfortunately.
So if there's no specific questions, third driveway. And it seems like it's the other weighty topic, and we'll get to the other bases of appeal, I'm sure, and I do want to give our friends at the Water District time to speak at some point in time tonight. But I wanted to start asking staff the questions around third driveway, because it seemed like at the Planning Commission meeting, staff was trying to find solutions up to and including, potentially including the third driveway, though I'm not sure if my memory is hazy or not. So staff, please, had ideas around keeping the third driveway been considered? Are there any recommendations at the tip of your brain tonight? Have you concluded that the third driveway is absolutely a horrible idea? Please elucidate.
Mayor Big Stick, yeah, so staff, during the Planning Commission hearing, we did have a long, there was a lot of discussion regarding different potential design options for the third driveway. As was mentioned in the report, as well as my presentation tonight, staff did meet with Sam Trans on June 12th, which was the day prior to the Planning Commission hearing, to discuss the potential permanent relocation of that bus stop. And that was discussed, it is a possibility. Just last week, the appellant did, they stated that they had engaged Caltrans to obtain approval for the permanent relocation of that bus stop, however, that has not occurred. At this point, staff, we've evaluated the different potential options that would be available if the third, third driveway was allowed, as well as the permanent relocation of the bus stop. And we have determined that it would allow additional on-street parking to be located on Clarendon Road, so it is a possibility. We just have not received an official resubmital of the project plans at this time, or an approval for the permanent relocation of the bus stop.
So, and I noticed condition of approval number 51. Was the consideration of moving that bus stop only in terms of allowing two extra parking spots, or could it be that if the bus stop has moved, it's a lot easier to put that third driveway in? And I ask because, on the one hand, there was a lot of community interest in making access to recycled water easier and convenient, and on the other hand, I can't help but persuade myself, and so I'm trying to suss out of you if there is a viable approach that can be taken to that third driveway on the other side of all of the presentations tonight.
Yes, as was previously mentioned, one of the main concerns with that third driveway was the line-of-sight issue with a parked bus located at the existing bus stop. With that removal of that parked, of that potential bus stop, there is the possibility that the line-of-sight issue is no longer an issue. Of course, there would still be parked vehicles there, so we would need to make sure that there's sufficient distance between the driveway and the first parking spaces, but they do have sufficient space between the proposed, the existing and proposed driveways that would allow for additional parking. And that's one of the, the things as well that staff was concerned about with the third driveway, as was proposed by the appellant, having the bus stop there, it allowed, it removed all the on-street parking on that road, because they did need space for the bus stop to be able to safely exit there as well. So if the bus stop is removed, it does allow for on-street parking to be located back onto that roadway.
If we are to go toward wanting that third driveway, could addition of approval make a contingent on Caltrans giving the okay?
Yes.
Counsel?
And just one more question, just if, for some reason, Caltrans says no, I think, I think the, the analysis was done based on a car turning, sorry, exiting right in front of the bus. And if the circulation was changed, where it entered where the bus is, and then came out behind the bus, is that a safer line-of-sight?
That would be a safer alternative, and that was proposed during the Planning Commission meeting as well for them.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Big Stick, before we close out on this local roadway safety plan diagram, I wanted to make sure we answered questions about that, and make sure to have staff augment what I'm gonna say about it, in that you can see in more detail here the types of accidents or injuries that have occurred along Francisco and Clarendon. And of course, this data is based on the current conditions of Francisco, which don't include angled parking.
Is that Francisco and Clarendon, or is it Oceana and Clarendon?
So you see both Francisco and Oceana. Oceana is underneath the label Francisco here. If you go up from Clarendon and Francisco, you see numerous gray dots related to injuries, and you see the two large yellow ones further down on Clarendon, the one that's underneath the RA of Francisco. You know, we can't zoom in further, you know, we separately gathered data about what that injury accident was, a vehicle severe injury accident. But, but for this map, you know, just to clarify the point that hopefully that is what Councilmember Bowles and, and councilmembers wanted to see regarding the actual incidents.
It's certainly more helpful, I just want to note that there is a bit of opacity to this view from, I think, at least my perspective, if not my colleagues, and it would be helpful if sometime in the future, a similar map could be drawn in which it is a little clearer to read.
Sure, and, and to that point, we, we had worked with Farron Pierce, as well as in responding to a council question regarding actual injury data, which is a much bigger research project to pull all of that together and present that information. We weren't able to do that before.
Just one point I want to make, just, just to confirm what I was saying before. So Palmetto is the one with the gray dots and the big black star in the middle, and the injury dots are all to the east of that. And looking at a Google map of Clarendon Road, the angled parking is all west of that intersection. So I don't think we can say that, that the injury network is because of the angled parking necessarily based on this data.
Didn't staff state earlier that thus far, Francisco's not considered a part of the injury network?
That's correct. Francisco Boulevard currently is not on the high injury network, but Palmetto and Manor is.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify regarding, so there's not angled parking on Francisco, right? So this, this report shows the existing conditions without angled parking.
And because it is a little difficult for me to read at present, I wanted to confirm that what you were suggesting was where there are angled spots, there are injuries that are occurring in those spots?
So it's, it's a little hard to see from the diagram, but if you zoom into Francisco and Manor, there are a cluster of gray dots within that intersection.
Sorry, Palmetto and Manor.
Palmetto and Manor. There are a cluster of gray dots with appears to be a, a black dot, which is a vehicle fatality at the intersection as well. So all of the angled parking, it did contribute to Palmetto being on the high injury network.
And appreciating that, that pernicious Walgreens site is right there, I'm also aware of those diagonal spots in front of the post office, as well as further up on Manor by the 7-Eleven, I believe, fronting Mizetti's. Are there any injuries associated with either the spots in front of Mizetti's or in front of the post office?
It's, it's a little challenging to see, I agree with the details of this diagram.
Thank you.
So, you know, there, there, you know, there's angled parking on those parking spaces in tho, in those frontages as well, and, and there appears to be collisions, you know, on Manor in that area as well.
Thank you very much.
Do our police department, I mean, I, maybe it's too much to ask for tonight, but I, I know that they record accidents by intersection, and, I mean, you know. What I was gonna say, I don't think, I don't think Manor and Palmetto are comparisons. One, those are R2O roads, there's so mu, I mean, this is deliberation, so I don't want to say it, but, um.
Yeah, let's.
That's, that's why I was looking at. to say it, but, um, that's why I was looking at Clarendon, so I'll save it.
Thank you very much. Let's, if there's no further questions on this slide, let's go back to the third driveway.
And thank you, Sarah.
Counsel, do you have any?
I'm sure I'll have a lot to say during deliberation, if that makes you feel better.
Let's go through the other three bases real quick. The, the awning over the gas fueling station? And I know you already went through it. I would like you to repeat why it is that we're asking the Water District to stick that on.
Yes, Mayor Big Stick. So based on staff's calculation of the impervious surface area proposed, the site is affecting over 50% of the existing area, which triggers the C3 requirements based on the municipal regional permits. There was typos on the submittal that the applicant submitted in June of last year. Their first sheet was never updated based on comments that the city had. So the, I can go back to the. So this screenshot here is of Sheet 2 of the June 2022 submittal, which shows the total impervious surface replaced or created at 17,507 square feet, which is 49.7%. After this submittal, there was additional changes to the site plan inside the corporate yard. So you can, these two site plans here compare the submittal that was done over the summer. You can see the different colors, that's the area that they're proposing to affect, compared to the site plan that was submitted in September of last year, which shows additional site area that's going to be affected. And so that's what staff based their calculation on, and that is over 50% of the project site.
So A, the project site is their entire property?
That is correct.
And so if it's more than 50%, by what is it, state law they're required to? Or is it our municipal code?
It's essentially law at every level. So this is flowing from the Clean Water Act, which goes down to the states, which goes to the regional water boards, which goes to county-level permits, of which each local agency in San Mateo County, for example, is a permity. So it's hard to give you a simple answer other than, yes, it's the law, and these are the permit guidelines that implement those stormwater quality improvement measures.
And what staff essentially is saying is it doesn't particularly matter that that area is not being touched by construction when iota, it's merely a matter of the fact that exists on the land that is substantially being developed.
That's right. Essentially, it's a trigger. So once you go over the 50% threshold, you need to redevelop the whole site in the currently compliant manner. If you're less than 50%, then you're allowed to only design the portion being altered to meet the current requirements. So that's the trigger in this instance. In the event, you know, that the appellant gets down to a, you know, building permit level design on this, assuming the project's approved tonight, and they come in at 49.9%, we would reevaluate and ensure that only the 49.9% of the area is required. So if this fuel cover area was not within that area of alteration, we could potentially remove that as a requirement. But currently, it is a requirement because the entire site needs to be designed to meet the current stormwater control requirements.
Can I ask a follow-on question to that? So the recommendation to cover the fueling area was the, I guess, for lack of a better word, mitigation for the impervious, the larger amount of impervious surface. Am I right?
Sort of. Maybe think of a different hypothetical. If you were to build this project from scratch today, you would have to cover the fueling area to meet the stormwater permit requirements. Because this project would exceed 50% of removed or replaced or new impervious surface, we have to treat it like it's a new development project, and so it needs to meet all of the current criteria. In a sense, it's a mitigation, but that's probably not the best framing that I would use.
That's kind of where I was going, is, okay, so covering the fueling thing is one way to handle it. Is there a, like, could you put pervious surface over here as another way of handling the stormwater requirements? That's where I was going when I was asking about that.
Right. I'm not aware if there's another readily available way to satisfy this requirement. The requirement to cover the fuel area is an explicit provision in the permit, and so it's not clear what latitude the city would have unless there was some, you know, question of infeasibility, for example. It appears feasible to cover this, and so we haven't explored alternatives further than that.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed that the COA says that prior to final inspection, they'll install the cover. It doesn't say contingent on whether or not in the final analysis, that 50% threshold has been crossed. Does the COA need to be amended to indicate that if there is a shift, they do not need to do it?
I don't think it needs to. It would probably be advisable to do that, to provide some clarity. That's a post-approval, reasonable discretion kind of interpretation that I and the city engineer would need to make when evaluating and attempting to approve a building permit application. We wouldn't apply a permit requirement that wasn't tied to some underlying need, but it would be helpful, I would argue, to clarify that.
And then the last one I have, if we're good on fuel cover for the moment anyway, was the asphalt to the center line. Please remind me, did we ask the school district to accommodate that condition of approval when we permitted the odd stat development? It occurs to me, from my time on Planning Commission to now, generally speaking, we ask all applicants to do that, but did we make an exception for the school district?
So you're correct, Mayor Big Stick, it is a standard condition of approval from the Engineering Division to request for all projects to do a mill and repaving of the road on the frontage to the center line. It was not an accommodation for the odd stat school project. It was oversight by the Engineering Division on this one due to the lack of staffing during this time for the project approvals. The odd stat road is in better condition than Francisco Boulevard. So Francisco Boulevard is, the PCI is in the 50s. And then we also imposed this condition on our own project for the Civic Center. The Civic Center project will also be repaving the roads on all the frontages for our own project.
So if I hear you correctly, with the school district project, we had every intention to, and oops. However, when it came to our own Civic Center project, we forced ourselves, the city, to do the exact same thing we ask every other applicant to do?
That is correct.
But I'm also hearing that the PCI in the vicinity of the odd stat project is different than the PCI in the vicinity of both the city's project and North Coast County Waters project. Am I correct?
That is correct. So the PCI at the North Coast County Water District's project is in the 50s. And then there is a threshold when you drop below 50, where the treatment is different. So when you're above 50 in the PSI, you're still able to do maintenance like slurry seals and the rubber cape seals that we were doing around the city that was just recently done. So because of the utility cuts, and then also the construction trucks that will be used for the project, it will drop the PCI below that threshold for us to be able to do slurry seals.
And it already started lower, anyway.
Yes.
Just luck of the draw where your street is located. Thanks. And just to follow up, I know we don't have specific plans yet for the next repaving. We're repaving the Manor area now, but do you have an idea of approximately when this area would be scheduled to be repaved?
I think we are still working on the five-year master plan, so we don't have a schedule as of today.
And that, that should be coming to us later this year or next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, as counsel may recall, during our strategic planning sessions, the next five-year, we're coming on the last year of the first five-year plan, and the new five-year plan will be developed. And is it anticipated for next spring or the following?
I need to, the following spring.
The following, so of 25, then?
Yes, 25.
And I seem to recall that counsel had a specific conversation around that item in terms of time management that we would put on the work plan for the coming year. Counsel, any other questions for staff? I do have one last question before we move to the, the public hearing. Commissioner Wright, and again, welcome, thank you for being here. I seem to recall that you were the dissenting vote when the vote was taken at the Planning Commission meeting. Could you please tell us why you decided to vote no? And I'm asking for your perspective specifically.
Yes, even though that's outside my role, I'm happy to answer that question, and thank you for the question. I am a big advocate for recycled water. I have a lot of concern about our future water use.
Give me just a moment, sir.
Just, just for the record, and I think Mr. Wright was about to say this, that his role here as liaison is to represent the majority position of the Planning Commission.
Okay, in that case, I retract the question.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to answer. Okay. With that, no further questions from counsel at this time of staff. We're going to begin the public hearing. I invite the applicant, the appellant up to speak for 10 minutes.
And we're going to open the public hearing officially. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I'm used to hearing a gavel.
Please don't do it.
Good evening, Ms. Carr. And Sarah, before you begin the 10 minutes, if we could allow Ms. Carr the opportunity just to introduce all the folks she has with us tonight?
I was informed that we do have a representative on Zoom.
Yes, yes, Ron Sanzo of Sandus Engineers is on Zoom.
Okay, give me one moment while I promote him to panelist on Zoom.
Okay, great.
And Ms. Carr, go ahead and introduce us to the entire team. Take your time, it's not going to eat into your 10 minutes, and then we'll pause for a brief moment and get the 10 minutes rolling.
I think most of you know our board president, Jack Brigette, Vice President Joshua Cosgrove, Director Anne Dujarnet, Director Ron Ash, and Director Will Hauser. So I'd like to welcome them. And we have our architect team, Scott Salgi and Amy Watson. Our traffic engineering team, on the phone is Ron Sanzo, and Jeff Sotera is here in person. And then we have our attorney, Patrick Miyaki. And that is our full team.
It's a lot of names to remember. I apologize if I refer to anyone in particular without immediately remembering your name. Try to amend it as we go along. Sarah, are we ready to begin?
Just pulling up the slideshow one moment.
Yeah.
And then Ms. Carr, do you want to reserve any time for rebuttal, or do you want to use your full 10 minutes in the presentation?
I'm sorry, the procedure with the new council rules is to provide 10 minute, 10 full minutes for the initial presentation, and then the appellant has the option for an additional three minutes for rebuttal. So you can use your full 10 minutes. There will be a one-minute sum-up warning that will be audible and visible on the podium there.
Great, thank you.
I'll begin the time when you start your presentation.
Okay, great. All right. I just want to thank everyone again for attending our meetings at the district. I was really happy that we got to speak with each of the council members. Director Dujarnet and I were really happy to host you and be able to introduce you to our project and the features of our project. You've seen all these conditions before, so I won't dwell on this slide. Where do I aim this?
Question.
Okay, how do I get it to advance?
And stop it.
Let's pause the clock while we work out the technical. Thank you.
Is it this, the white arrow key? Okay, now that's working. Okay, let's just. Again, we are asking the city council to remove condition number 12, multiple studies cite diagonal parking as a traffic calming measure. It's really implemented throughout the country to slow traffic and create a pedestrian-friendly environment. Our proposed plan also includes street bulbout planters. These are going to narrow the roadway and create safer crosswalks for pedestrians with less distance to cross the road. The landscaping in these bulbouts will also provide a lot of street beautification. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour on Francisco Boulevard, and our district's data showed that we submitted that there are about 2,000 to 3,000 average daily trips in this block of Francisco Boulevard. The data shows that streets that have less than 10,000 daily trips and speeds of up to 30 miles per hour are good candidates for diagonal parking. The staff report mischaracterizes Francisco Boulevard as having a really high traffic volume and speed, but Francisco is estimated, again, to see 2,000 to 3,000 average daily trips, and the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour, which is in line with speeds generally considered for angled parking. We believe that diagonal parking can safely coexist with bike travel. Angle parking can be, safely coexists with a share row. It's not really a bike lane, it's a class-three bike lane, but there are lots of examples throughout the country of angled parking and a share row coexisting. We are not going to stick out any further than the cars that are already in the roadway, and that's why we're moving our property line back to allow that angled parking. Anyway, share row would have street markings, and it's best for streets, again, with less than 35 miles per hour. So this is an ideal candidate. We did want to point out that the, throughout the public hearing, there was a statement that Francisco Boulevard was an arterial road, when in effect is identified in the general plan as a collector, and in the Sharp Park specific plan as both a collector and a local road. Here is a figure showing, the blue stars are headquarters, right along is the gray street, which you can see on the figure is called a local street. These arterial roads have higher volume, traffic volumes, and higher speeds, but local and collector roads provide mobility at lower speeds and have lower traffic volumes. And here's a similar figure from the general plan. The yellow line shows Francisco again as a collector street. This road type classification guided the decision-making process for the Planning Commission. They made their decision based on incorrect information, and the city's consultant emphasized safety concerns and statistics for angled parking on arterial roads. And also, the road classification of Francisco Boulevard is not relevant to staff's conclusion that angled parking is safe at that location. We disagree with that statement, as angled parking is typically considered on local and collector roadways and not on arterial roadways. Again, city staff made comparisons to angled parking.
Sarah, would you pause the clock for a moment? I am so sorry to interrupt you.
There's a big echo.
There's a big echo, and I figure if I were up there talking right now, I'd be distracted as I'll get out.
It's really crazy. Thank you.
Do we know where the echo is coming from? Can we?
It sounds like it's coming from right here. If there's like a volume control? Can we turn off the volume on that monitor?
A technical assistance, please. PC2 to the rescue. Do a quick mic check to see if we hear any feedback?
Test, test, a little bit, but maybe less?
Yeah, I don't hear it.
Okay.
I, I want to make sure you feel comfortable enough up there that you're not distracted from what you're trying to tell us. So if you're comfortable, that's what we need to know. We've got more technicians coming.
Okay, it's a little bit echoing. Okay, how about now? Mayor, maybe you can speak a little bit, because I was hearing it with your voice.
Yeah, happy to lend my voice to the process of making sure we have no technical difficulties at this juncture. It sounds like you heard something up there. Test, 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 test. Hello, how are you this evening? Yes?
Can I suggest that maybe we take a five-minute recess and then have them begin again?
I like that idea. Let's recess for five minutes and reset the clock to make sure that we give everyone a fair hearing here. Reset it two minutes.
It's already, it's already paused.
Okay.
You're not saying start over again?
Anyway, we'll reconvene at 8:56.
Hello, hello?
Think it's fixin'?
This is a test.
Okay, test, test. It always feels like I hear it when someone else's mic is talking. Test, test, test. Sounds better, maybe. Yeah.
From the place we left off in Water District's presentation, please. And if we're good to go, okay. Please resume.
Okay. Again, the city staff made comparisons to the angled parking at Walgreens, which is on an arterial, arterial road, Palmetto, despite the Francisco Boulevard project site classified as a collector. And I'm sure if we had the traffic counts for Palmetto, it would be more than 2,000 to 3,000 trips per day. That is much more frequented intersection than our intersection at Clarendon and Francisco. Now, on to the drive-through recycle water fill station. This is a great program. It's one of the key programs that's featured in our building redesign. This program provides free recycle water to Pacifica residents for landscaping. It's really a unique program that benefits this community. There's not very many places in the world that do this. This proposed drive-through would enable customers to fill their own containers and would not require staff time. It would also allow staff to keep the corporation yard secured. And, you know, the site security is the utmost, of the utmost importance. From the beginning, we've been really confused by the city's resistance to this proposal. We actually never got feedback on our first three planning applications. It was just when we received some engineering comments in February 2023 that we were to delete the driveway. So we never got that feedback from engineering when we met with them a couple of times. So we just are curious as to why there's pushback on this measure that's benefits the community. You know, we really are seeking to improve the quality of our services that we're providing to residents of the city with this proposal and others in our plan. And really, the city serves the same people. So we would hope that the city would like to benefit those people as well. In an unlikely event that the bus stop cannot be moved, Sam Trans did say that the additional driveway was acceptable. The city was out there when we met them on June 12th. They just would want us to delete this bulbout on Clarendon, which we can easily do. We would be more than happy to receive such a proposal from the city, but we haven't. So we're proposing it now. We can definitely reverse the flow of traffic if that is the issue, if it's causing a sightline, line of sight conflict. So I did submit this figure today. We believe we can actually add one parking spot, probably between the existing and the new driveway, even without the removal of the bus stop. But if we remove the bus stop, we can probably create these additional three spots with the movement of the bus stop. Again, the site distance conflict can be eliminated, and we're committed to moving that bus stop in coordination with the Sam, Sam Trans, who was very supportive of it. They brought a bus, they really said, oh yeah, we can move it. They sat there and recalculated all their routes that serve our bus stop. And they said that, that would work, we, we could really do that. You know, there's no ADA issues, they looked at the ADA issues. So we, we're ready to move forward with that. It, it looks like the Caltrans process is going to be a little bit laborious. We're going to have to submit an encroachment permit, which requires potentially some engineering and design, and we're going to need to cooperate, have the cooperation of the city and Sam Trans to do that. We're happy to fund that process. That is something that I think will benefit everyone. Having a bus stop under the overpass will be a great thing. That will protect pedestrians. Anyway, the city's redesign at the planning commission really wouldn't be possible to implement safely, because the western driveway needs to be kept clear for emergencies. We've got trucks and equipment that enter and exit the corporation yard. We've also got deliveries, garbage pickup, everything that needs to come through that exit and entrance. That's the one, our western driveway needs to be for staff only, so we can really keep it for emergencies. We did get some renderings done of the recycle water drive-through and included them here. And for some reason, I'm, I did look at the roadway safety plan, and the Francisco Boulevard, again, we have discussed, not part of the high injury network. We believe that the proposed diagonal parking and the recycle water drive-through will work well with all of the proposed and recommended improvements at the intersection of Francisco Boulevard and Clarendon. And now it's time for a few words from our board president.
Sarah, please. Stop the clock for a moment, please.
Sorry for the delay. You lose a lot when the chemo kicks in. As a rationale for our new headquarters, we felt employee safety was critical, because we have a lot of folks that work inside, and if a catastrophic thing happens, earthquake or something like that, someone could get killed. We also want to be able to guarantee clean, potable water in perpetuity to the people of Pacifica. Regarding the diagonal parking, many studies have proved that it is safer than parallel parking. You can have experts, we can have experts. I don't want to get into that and waste time. All I know is that I, I'm pretty sure it works everywhere that they've done it. And if you're, if you are being misled, if your staff is telling you it is not, and the other comment I had on that one is, what does Oregon have to do with California? The hell with Oregon. Recycled water is mandated by state law. The third drive is the only way that we can guarantee safety for our staff, security and the public, so we can get, they can get free recycled water. How many people on your staff don't live in Pacifica but are making decisions for those who do? North Coast County Water District has 19 employees, 12 in living Pacifica, 63%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for the appellant?
I'm not sure if Adrian's the, the right person. Can you explain to us why the diagonal parking is so important to the district? You talked about it in terms of your customers, you know, is it, is it, so it's, it's only, it's, the only, the difference is only two parking spaces. So is it the parking counts, the ease of access? What, what, what is it that is so important to the district in having that in your design?
It really, it really beautifies the neighborhood. It adds that additional parking along Francisco, where we're moving our entrance from Brighton Road to Francisco Boulevard. That is the commercial center. Currently, we're in the residential area. We have a lot of customers that park on Brighton when they arrive to pay their bill. And it would be best if they parked along Francisco and not disturbing the residential neighborhood, that Brighton doesn't have the capacity, the same capacity and the same safety considerations as Francisco Boulevard. So we feel it's going to be a great convenience to our customers and also the residents of the neighborhood to have that parking moved and put more densely on Francisco Boulevard, where it's more of a commercial area.
But, but you're keeping some of the green spaces that are the short-term parking on Brighton also as part of this proposal?
I think the green spaces will only be the three spaces that are the parallel spots in front of the, on Francisco. The three parallel spots that are on Francisco will be right by the front door.
Okay, so the others that are on Brighton that are currently green will not, no longer be green?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I'd love to hear from your traffic engineer a little bit more about kind of what studies, you know, specific studies she's looked at. And the, the report I read from your traffic engineer talked about general safety, but not about bicycle safety, and would just love to hear more about that, too.
Okay, should we get Ron, or you want to step ahead, Jeff? Okay.
So we looked at, at many studies. Maybe I don't have the references off the top of my head here, but, you know, comparing between parallel parking conditions and angled parking conditions, there really is no difference. The movements are similar. You know, backing into a spot or backing out of a spot. The potential conflict with door opening between bicycles and, and the car door exists with parallel, but not with angled. Is there a specific?
Well, I, I, I mean, the, the city, the city mentioned two studies, and I guess the one I'm most concerned about is the ASHTO that said 51 or 54% more dangerous to have diagonal parking. And so I'd love to hear your rebuttal of that, and, and if you have a specific report that says otherwise.
Well, in, in that very 2001 Oregon report, it states specifically that when you include the fact that angled parking is favored, so it's more highly used, when you look at those in comparison, there is no difference between angled.
Right, I, I, I mentioned that, too, in terms of the Oregon report, but the ASHTO report is the one.
I, I know of no, no study by ASHTO that says angled parking increases accident rates by 50% or anywhere near that. Sure. I don't know how we have Patch run in.
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council members. And I apologize, I, so the question is just in general related to studies about safety versus diagonal and parallel?
Sir, before she asks the question again, would you mind reminding us what your title is?
I'm sorry, Ron Sanzo, I'm Associate Principal with Sandus, and I'm, I lead the traffic group here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing vague information that your studies say it's not more dangerous, but I haven't heard anything specific, and, and I'd love to hear you comment on the ASHTO percentage in particular.
Sure, I, so I don't have the ASHTO report up in front of me. I do, however, have the Oregon report, which I think by and large is what, what's been used in terms of, you know, I heard of 50% or 51% mentioned earlier. I believe that was from the, the Oregon study. And just, I mean, reading the summary here, it says, you know, the two key takeaways, none of the studies included sites where the parking was changed. none of the studies included sites where the parking was changed from parallel to angled. So all of the data was either from going from angled to parallel, the opposite way, or if it was just looking at what they called cross-sectional. So essentially, a similar street here and a similar street there, however they define those two. And I think the other key piece of information here is, it's noted, it says in recent research, there was a before and after study conducted, and the researchers found no statistical evidence of the difference between the crash rate of angled and parallel parking when the increase of parking activity was included in the analysis. Again, I think, I think in a lot of ways, what we're seeing is apples and oranges, where there may be a higher volume of accidents, but that's just because the angled parking is seeing a higher volume of use. Jeff was mentioning.
Okay. Is, can you just tell me what ASHTO is? And kind of what, is that an important design standard that you typically look at for analysis?
Yeah, so ASHTO is the organization, it's the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. So they have a series of design guidelines and regulations. Again, I'm not familiar with the exact study that's being quoted. I'm sure we could pull it up. You know, I'm more familiar, I know the Oregon study, and I got disgust ad nauseam at the planning commission. So, you know, certainly if there's a specific piece of data, I can try to find that for ASHTO. But I think, you know, the point is, I think a lot of what we're going to be seeing here is apples and oranges in terms of the types of use you would see from a parallel parking facility compared to a diagonal parking, or an angled parking facility.
And can you talk about bicycles behind angled parking versus?
Certainly. Yeah, and I think Adrian did a good job and touched on her, you know, presentation. So, I mean, we would agree, I think it could be tough to get, you know, a Class II bike lane into this area, based on some of the data the city shared. You know, a Class III bike facility, which is the share row, where the bike and the, bike and vehicle are using the same area. And I think that would be possible. There's nothing restricting those two types of facilities, where there's nothing that says you can't have diagonal or angled parking and a Class III facility. So if at some point, you know, a bike facility was desired in this area, I think a Class III would likely be what would be here. And again, the type of roadway it is, I think would, you know, be consistent with what we potentially see on this, this type of facility.
Okay, thank you.
And while we have you on the screen, Mr. Sanzo, Water District referenced multiple studies that parallel parking, excuse me, diagonal parking, caught myself that time, could be used as traffic calming measures. Which studies is the Water District referring to, please?
I think there's a series of, and again, off the top of my head, these tend to be similar, I'd say, to like the 2001 Oregon study. So these aren't things that, you know, say Cal Trans or a local agency is putting out like today. I think we can certainly provide a list of reference studies that, you know, would look at the benefits of angled parking. And it's generally going to be the overall transportation environment, where you're seeing lower speeds, you're seeing kind of a more, just slow down of traffic. And then I think where, you know, the particular location of where this angled parking is going to be is right, right before a stop sign, right? So, I mean, I would hope someone's not coming through there at an excessive speed, because, you know, shortly after that angled parking, there's going to be a need to stop. So again, there, these studies tend to be kind of here and there. We could certainly provide the list. There's not going to be something that, say, Cal Trans did last year. It's more in line with kind of what, what we're seeing from the 2001, you know, Oregon study that shows. There's benefits in terms of, you know, lower speeds and things like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions for the applicant, appellant, same diff?
I do. Could you talk a little bit more about your conversations that you had with Sam Trans? I think I'm really interested in that, like, what they had to say. And did you have anything in writing? Not like you have to, but I'm just curious of.
Oh, my emails with them. I think we, I do have confirmation, yes, we met, and yes, would be feasible. Yeah. So we do have confirmation in writing. But the city, I mean Roland and Stephanie Cervantes were there at our meeting, and they heard what they said, too, which was, yeah, we can move the bus stop, and we believe it's a fine location, and it would meet the ADA requirements. The crosswalks were acceptable. That was something that they were really interested in, is the crosswalks. The roadway is much wider there, so it's actually much easier for cars to go around a bus. Because like I said, they brought a bus, and they parked it there. And there were, there was plenty of room, almost even two lanes of traffic room. So, I mean, if a bike lane were to be on Clarendon in that location, you could definitely accommodate a bus stop, a bike lane, and a traffic lane in that location, which I don't think, like, the location of Clarendon in front of our building would be more difficult unless there were no cars, unless there were no parking on that side, then you could accommodate an individual bike lane there. I do want to mention, I do have some figures of the data from the roadway safety plan, if you guys want to look at them. We downloaded the data, because it was all online in our presentation.
Yes, please.
If you could bring up my slides again. We looked at, because, you know, we had seen that this roadway safety plan was a part of your council agenda, you know, just last month. And so we looked at the, how did the data show the individual accidents near our building? And you can see where they are. There's like little blue dots about where the accidents were. Doesn't have the, I don't have like the information about each individual accident, but I do have the little blue dots on a map. able to download the data for collision records from 2016 to 2020. Okay, so this is Francisco right here. You can see the accidents on Clarendon were down by, the focus of the accidents were down by Clarendon and Lakeview. And then there's the one on Oceana. And the others that were coming up when we downloaded the data were on Highway One. So those were the, those were the accidents that were on Clarendon, nearest to our facility. And then we have another view of the accidents along Francisco. So from this view, you can see the Clarendon, and then the one on, the other one on Clarendon, and then the three on the Highway One there. So there's none on Francisco, Brighton, and none in front of the district headquarters on Clarendon. I have like a list, we could just download the data, you can have the list of the accidents. There's, the other ones on Francisco are down towards Lakeview when it hits Francisco at the golf course corner there. That was the other troublesome spot that had had an injury crash.
I have one unrelated to traffic issue, a question.
Go for it.
That's okay. Could your architect maybe speak to the C3 calculations and whether you agree with the city's analysis or have a different perspective?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Scott Sauli. I'm a principal at Nolan-Tam Architects in Berkeley. The spirit of the strategy for the site was to repair and replace portions of the site as best we could. And so our strategy was to maintain and be below the 50% calculation. Obviously, the percentage points of where, you know, of the city's calculation versus ours are very close. And we're very happy to go back and look at the area that we've touched in order to basically preserve that we're under that 50% threshold. But overall, our spirit is to maintain as much as we can on the site, and then rebuild the pieces that really benefit the district.
While you're up there.
I'll stay up here.
Thank you. I'm hesitant to call you by your first name. What was your last?
Scott Sauli.
Saul?
Sauli.
Ghi?
Yeah.
Sauli, okay.
There you go. Perfect.
That's not the question, though.
So, and forgive me, because this is a question coming pure out of ignorance, but I'm now curious, because we're talking about that covering on the fuel station, wanting to get under the percentage so we don't have to cover the fuel station. How onerous is that cover on the fuel station? Like, cost, work, is design? Well, it depends on the overall size of the area that we need to cover for the fueling station and adjacent to cover vehicles. Obviously, you have to build a structure, foundation, support, needs to be tall enough for their large vehicles to get underneath it. So it's a significant structure that we weren't, you know, really wasn't part of our scoping for the project. But, you know, we also have to consider seismic impact of building a freestanding cover on the site. It's, you know, there's a lot of calculations, obviously structural analysis for that as well, that we'd have to perform. But ballparking, I mean, it's hard to, you know, we can throw out some square foot costs or get some, you know, analysis for you to, would support not taking that on.
You painted a pretty clear picture for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, I just have one more for Adrian. Well, it's not an architectural question. For Adrian, yeah. I didn't hear you talk about condition of appeal number 11, about the temporary parking space. And from what I understand, it is the city's responsibility to actually move it, and the staff report said that. But, so are you, I think your only responsibility would be to write a letter to let the city know, like, when you're about to start your pre-construction activities and so forth? Is that what you object to? Or can you clarify a little bit why that's an appeal?
I think it's because it's, to us, it's confusing about when and how that process occurs. It wasn't as specific as it could be. So we believe it's just the city's responsibility. So the city has before it these use permits. Perhaps the city could say, as part of the permit approval, that we approve the moving of this vehicle, and then it just moves when the construction begins, or, you know, whatever the trigger is, we wouldn't, it was just confusing about the way that we have to ask for it. In a legal framework, we just didn't understand how we have responsibility for that.
Maybe we can ask the city attorney to answer that.
I think my attorney might, my attorney might have more clear, because he had more clear reasoning, perhaps.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Patrick Miyaki. I'm the attorney for North Coast County Water District. And we can certainly, you can certainly ask your own city attorney as well. The move, we've been asking to try to relocate the RV spot for a long time. And it is clear that it's not within our authority, because if it were, we would have, we would have moved it. And so the concern about the condition is, we need to ask, and then it's up to the city and their sole discretion, whether they're going to move it or not. And that could potentially delay the construction for, we don't know how long. And every delay costs the district and the citizens of Pacifica a lot of money, as the delays have continued to add up. So that's our concern with this condition. We would like to actually have it moved by a certain date. That would be great, because then we can plan our construction activities that's not way out in the future. So that's the concern we have with condition number 11.
Okay, counsel, any further questions for appellant? If not, we can move on to public questions.
I just wonder if anyone had an answer for me about charging stations?
Yes, council member. Based on the site plan, they're proposing five EV chargers.
Five?
That's correct.
At the location depicted on the angle, is it there or?
The EV charging proposed is in, within their corporate yard. So it's on their site.
Oh, inside their fence?
Yes.
Aha.
Yeah, Amy Watson, Nolan-Tam Architects, actually five double chargers and one single charger. And they are all inside the corporation yard, per our latest civil plans.
Further questions? Okay, let's ask the public to participate at this juncture. I have a handful of cards, starting with Bart, and I'm going to butcher your name, Pantoja. You know, I've met you, I know you. I don't think I ever asked you your last name. Followed by Jim Kramer, and then Jennifer Barba. And please, tell me how I pronounce your name at the beginning of the comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, with a name like Bart, usually there aren't too many around, so last names aren't that necessary. So yeah, my name is Bart Pantoja. I am the business manager of the, excuse me, Business Manager, Secretary Treasurer of the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trades Council, representing 10,500 men and women working in the construction trades, many who reside in Pacifica. The Building Trades Council is in support of the North County Water District Headquarters Upgrade Project Appeal. The Water District is committed to building using union contractors, which will ensure a high-quality project built by highly skilled and trained workers. The Water District's project as presented will benefit the city of Pacifica and its residents with a design that will protect, preserve, and enhance public health and safety. Increase parking for visitors to the district, the beach, and adjacent businesses. It is projects such as this that invigorate local economy and produce career pathways to viable and sustainable living wages. We hope that you will approve the district's headquarters, excuse me, Emergency Operating Center project as designed, and ensure we will move for, and will, excuse me, and ensure that it will move forward for the benefit of this community. Thank you for the time. I know you, I'm listening to your line of questioning, since I have a little time left. You all seem like very intelligent and capable citizens who have stepped up and become, you know, people of service for your, for your city. It seems to me, by your line of questions, that you're all reasonable and have like, good sense. So I'm really looking forward to your decision tonight, and hope it aligns with the beliefs of the Building Trades Councils and the labor unions here in San Mateo County, and especially here in Pacifica. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pantoja. Jim Kramer?
Yes, hi, I'm Jim Kramer. I live in Sharp Park. I had a really well-prepared statement, and it's just hash. I've learned a lot, and I should have prepared better before I wrote my statement, but we'll see how I do sort of ad-libbed. I really strongly support the Water District's appeal. I have a personal interest in the drive-through water recycling upgrade. I considered a really creative idea for facilitating increased use of this precious resource. Restricting the drive-through feature is essentially compromises the whole plan. It does sound like the wheels are all turning, and that good solutions to that exist. So most of the rest of what I had to say about this, I'll leave out. It really was, seemed to me largely a case of differing opinions that both had really strong points, and it's good to hear it's being resolved. I also wanted to comment that the, the idea that this is good for freeing up staff time is good. I was, I was going to say that surely we can all agree that watching me hold a hose pumping water into barrels is not a really good use of water personnel's time. So please let the self-service drive-through layout stand. Then I deleted the whole section on parking. Even hearing the great discussion tonight, it was apparent that plausible points of view were being offered on both sides. And if you just listened to one, you thought, that's pretty good. And you listen to another, it sounded like you had a really good rebuttal. It's really hard for me to weigh in confidently on that. And I was relieved when Commissioner Wright explained that that's really what it seemed to feel like to him at the meeting, too. I also wanted, so I, I would encourage the, the appeal to be allowed for the I also wanted, so I, I would encourage the, the appeal to be allowed for the parallel parking, because it is two differing opinions, and it's, there's lots of evidence that it's not going to be that bad, and it's not a heavily-used street like the ones that are being used in opposition. And finally, I wanted to, I think it's important that rearview car cameras are increasingly prevalent. And when I back out of that Walgreens place, which is truly a mess, the rearview camera looking back makes it, makes all the difference in the world, and those are getting better and better and more and more common in all vehicles. The third, yeah. The last couple of points I want to make are really general. Encouraging responsible water use should be a high priority, not just for the Water District, but for Planning Department and for the whole city. Starting with early irregularities in the exchange between, in the exchange of information between the two parties, it was really confusing to me that the city was making this remodeling project and recycling upgrades so difficult. But here we are in an appeal where both sides are forced in an adversarial position. This is really disappointing. This is not the way our government should work. I'm sad it's come to this. I urge you commissioners to, council members, to grant the Water District's appeal to at least items 12 and 14. We owe it to them to support their vision and facilitate their goals for improving public service, using their staff time more effectively and stimulating, not stymying, the use of our very expensive tertiary treated water resource.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Jennifer Barba, followed by Chris Redfield and Steve Kwan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jennifer Barba. I am a resident here in Pacifica, as well as a small business owner of Perfect Pour Cafe. I've spoken on this point of the Water District upgrade, and I've offered my full support. An upgrade of the Water District would mean just that, which is why an appeal is so important. Upgrade to the beautification of the neighborhood through increased lighting and greenery. The proposed increased lighting and greenery of the project is indeed beautiful, but also increases the feeling of safety in the neighborhood. Neighborhood safety is important when considering, when consideration of the residents, neighborhood interactions, and tourism. People gravitate and patronize places that feel safe, are well-lit, green, and maintained. Upgrade to safety and accessibility of water. For workers, residents, safety is a huge, is a huge factor. Also, upgrade to parking, which one may say only one parking spot would be extra in the, in the proposed plans. But for a small business, one extra spot is one extra spot, especially in this particular neighborhood, which has become an attraction for multiple oversized vehicles lining up on Francisco Boulevard. I personally have called and reported RVs lined up for more than 72 hours. I've learned that parked RVs actually get up to 144 hours, or six days, before it gets tagged. After 72 hours, I can call in an oversized vehicle parked, or any vehicle parked, for more than 72 hours, but the police have 72 hours to respond to my call. Many of times, we have had RVs, or just vehicles in general, taking up three to four spaces for a week or more. The proposed diagonal parking would actually create space for our customers, as it would limit the option for oversized vehicles to park right in front of our business, which in itself is a huge upgrade. Also, just sitting here listening, you guys are comparing the diagonal parking in front of Walgreens to what it would be if you installed diagonal parking on Francisco Boulevard. But you're comparing apples to oranges, and I'm sitting here thinking, after having a good cup of coffee, wink, wink. Walgreens angled parking is located after a stop, so cars are actually accelerating by those spaces, okay? While on the Francisco angled parking that's proposed, it's before a stop sign, so cars would be approaching those diagonal spaces, decelerating. Just a little food for thought. Is there any studies on that? I just want to thank the Water District for wanting to invest their resources in our neighborhood and our city of Pacifica. We thank the Water District for their years of commitment to the Pacificans, and I'm confident in this appeal, and I can't wait for you all to break ground on this awesome project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Barba. Chris Redfield.
Good evening, staff, council. Chris Redfield. Here we are again. I think you all know my stance on the issues being discussed tonight. I think you all got my email today and the reasons for those, those reasons. There's only one condition that I feel is negotiable, and that is condition number 24 for the third driveway. I think that's a project that is definitely doable. Sam Tran seems to be on board. And as long as all the conditions are met from the multiple agencies, I think that's definitely a reasonable accommodation to do. Every condition being contested tonight are literally peripheral. There's nothing affecting the property or the building proposal that's really up for debate. It's all on the external part of the building. It doesn't affect the footprint, it doesn't affect anything. The public right of way, which is the city's purview, is what is being challenged. It seems board members are baffled that they did not receive a rubber stamp on their project from the outset. North Coast County Water District management and board members are intelligent, seasoned professionals who seem to have developed tunnel vision. That's not a desirable attribute at that level. Tomorrow, North Coast County Water District will be 79 years old. Excuse me. We all know the saying that with age comes wisdom. In this case, it seems to have acquired arrogance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redfield. Steve Kwan, followed by John Keener, and that is my last card. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card in the back, and staff will bring it up to us for you to be called upon.
Mayor Big Stick, I have a note that Mr. Kwan has left, and will be emailing his comments, so we can go to Mr. Keener.
Thank you very much, and it might be pertinent to bring up the information for call-in for those who are viewing at home.
Are you going to bring that information up, or should I go ahead?
Go ahead. I think they'll bring it up in due time.
Okay. I'm John Keener, former council member and mayor of the city, and it is really great to see all of you and staff. It's, it's great to connect again. I'm here in support of the Water District's appeal, especially the drive-through recycled water driveway and the angled parking. But, you know, and I won't hash over all the stuff, supporting or not supporting it, because you have asked questions well beyond anything that I have even thought of. And so, so I think you should be really sort of proud of the job you're doing. I'm proud of you. And that's about it. I hope you find for the Water District, but we'll, we'll accept whatever you deem fit. Thank you.
Thank you, John. For those of you who may be watching at home by television, please dial, if you wish to make a comment, 1-669-900-6833, webinar ID 811-5615-8241 pound. Press * 9 to raise your hand. Press * 6 to unmute when called upon by screen name. Otherwise, you'll unmute by Zoom. Oh, excuse me. When you're called upon by the last four digits of your phone, you can press * 6 to unmute. That's where I got confused. Do please state your full name for the record at the start of your comment. When you're at the two-minute mark, I'll alert you that you have one minute remaining of your time. I do have one more card, but we'll do that after the Collins, I think.
We have, we have one raised hand for Brent Turner.
Mr. Turner, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, honorable council members. My name is Brent Turner. I'm a local businessman and civil rights activist. I'm urging the council to uphold the Water District's appeal and approve their project without conditions. I reviewed all the materials today, again, and documents before this meeting, and I looked at it with an objective view. And I'm really taken aback. It seems like there's a personal issue here going on, maybe with your city manager doesn't appreciate the district. I don't know what's going on there. I tried to reach out to your city manager, but I did not get a response. The city's responses and documentation looks inaccurate to me. It's filled with errors, and it doesn't have much substance to it. I think somebody's playing a trick on the council, and I object. We're hopeful that the angled parking goes forward, as it apparently meets all safety standards and codes and improves the area. The city's opposition to it, again, seems personal. I don't know what's going on there behind the scenes. I've tried to find out, but I can't talk to the city manager. He hasn't returned calls. You see what happened with the fishing bowl when the city kept messing with that? And the Water District now is going to, apparently if things don't go well, have the same recourse, which just throws us into a, into a, an area that I don't think is appropriate for governments to be, of taking sides like this. I don't know what's going on behind the scenes. Like I said, I can't talk to your city manager, but I think that Mayor Big Stick and the council should recognize that there are political consequences here, and I think your city manager is pushing you into that situation, which is unconscionable. I don't really understand it. I have spoken to council, council members about the project, and have had good conversations. And I believe the best course of action is to approve the Water District's project without any conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
I do have one card from Sue DeGree.
Hi, thank you, appreciate it. I'm encouraging you to uphold the appeal. I also want to thank the Water District. When I was on council, I was concerned that we didn't have control over water. I also was surprised we didn't have control over schools. Not that I'm a control freak. But as citizens, you know, you like one shop type, pull it all together, know what you're doing, right hand knowing what the left hand is doing. So, I started going to meetings, board meetings for the Water Department, talking to the individuals, reading wonderful, oh, full minutes, don't you love that? And I was very, very impressed. They're very professional, they do very hard work. We are in a good position for water, although I don't think we should rest, because, you know, San Francisco get, will probably get most of it if there's a hurricane, oh, hurricane, excuse me, earthquake or whatever. But I really appreciate what the Water Department does, because water is gold, and we're all going to be in a horrible place if it's not well done. I also appreciate how the Water Department was extremely proactive for recycled water and started getting recycled pipes for us, so we started, you know, not having to use our fresh water. So, I really appreciate that. I also, you know, we all have a history, Pacifica and maybe every city, is you take two doggone lawn, long permitting things. I mean, I heard that constance, just like the potholes. You're terrible. So, whatever the city can do to help that relationship with the Water Department, which is so important to us, is to help things to get moving as efficiently as possible, and not one for super speedy to, you know, do dangerous things. But the Water Department, just like our buildings, are in need, and this is pretty timely to be doing it at the same time the city's doing it. Regarding the diagonal parking, I'm scared of diagonal parking. I won't do it. But I had a thought while I was sitting here. You know, on Manor and those areas, the diagonal parking, the part that's horrible, besides pulling out and being scared, people do U-turns to get into the diagonal parking. They can't do it. There's no U-turn, there's nothing on that side. It's a highway. So, they're not going to be doing any U-turns to get into the diagonal parking. So, it's just, just a weird thought, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I have no further cards. There appears to be nobody online or on the phone line. So, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. I do, am left with a question for the appellant on the other side.
And, and they have three minutes of rebuttal, should they choose to use it?
And they have three minutes of rebuttal. I figure I should ask their question before I hear the rebuttal. Okay. Manage your car. It's an easy one. Oh, so before the rebuttal itself, I have a quick question. And so, our friend from Labor, Bart Pantoja, arrived tonight. I was not aware that Labor was tasked with creating this building. Can you elaborate, please?
We are going to be collaborating with the Labor in order to build our building. So, we've just recently reached out, and we don't have any agreements, but we are going to be working towards that. And working with our construction manager to write our bid documents to be such. And I think that the contractors, that they've already identified the two that would be interested in our project, they already are affiliated with Labor. So, I think that they're the major contractors.
Thank you. And our fellow council member, O'Neill, was here. He was a major advocate for unions, and he probably would have asked the question already that we did not ask, and I myself am a member of a union, so that helps to inform me, and it's personally good to hear. So, that was my question. Counsel, do you have any other questions for appellant before we hear a rebuttal?
I have one more question for staff. I don't know.
So, I figure we'll do staff questions on the other side of the public hearing. And Water District, did you want to take the three minutes you have?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Really appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you our project. Thank you very much for your consideration, for your questions, for your comments. I really appreciate everything I've been hearing tonight, because what I've wanted to see as a partner in this, I've heard it tonight from you five. I've heard a partner, and that's what we have wanted from the beginning, and I think has lacked in a lot of areas. So, thank you for that. I'm not really going to rebut anything in particular. You've heard all the sides, and we could go down many rabbit holes with all the different studies and data and this and that. What I just want to emphasize to you all is, this project, as it was designed, was driven by the Board of Directors. We live in this community. We care about this community. We've all lived here decades. One of our, one of our directors, our newbie, has only lived here eight years. The rest of us, I mean, we're practically lifers. Decades we've lived here, and we care about this community, we care about the safety of our community. We would not present a project to you that was not safe. And that is what we have done. And not only that, but it also improves the community. We've reached out to the community, we've talked to them, our neighbors. It's so important, just focusing on the diagonal, the third driveway, you've heard it, but the diagonal parking on Francisco is so critical to this project, because we are moving parking from the residential area. I've been on this board since 2004, and we constantly block the residents that live there. It's not fair to that neighborhood. Francisco is the appropriate spot for that parking, and diagonal allows us to maximize it, and we've demonstrated it's safe. We've demonstrated its safety. So, I don't know exactly how to wrap it all up, other than just how I did, and, you know, thank you for your consideration, and, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, point of clarification, if we have any questions for the appellant on the other side of public hearing, will I have to reopen the public hearing?
Yes, but you can also, yes, you can open the, reopen the public hearing to ask questions of, of the appellant.
I just want to make sure I understand the protocols, should the need arise. So, with that, I will close public hearing.
And Mayor Big Stick, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, before the council enters into deliberation, I wanted to just take opportunity to have staff talk about a couple of the points that they heard during the presentation. um, to have staff talk about a couple of the points that they heard during the presentation. I also wanted to take this opportunity for, as the council knows, but for the, the applicant, the appellant and the viewing public, to kind of reiterate what staff's job is here related to development projects and to appeals. I can say confidently that I and the council and city staff are very excited about the water district's reconstruction of their headquarters. And to have Francisco Boulevard with a new civic center and a new water district, who's a key collaborator for water, as former council member and mayor Degree mentioned. I mean, water is gold. Water is essential. And the collaboration that our staffs have in the operational aspects is critical to the community. And so we're very excited about this project. Staff's role, the city's role, is to provide the council with our best professional and technical expertise and recommendations about conditions on projects with, as the council needs to keep in mind, the public health and safety of the entire community. And so appeal hearings, what you hear are staff's technical and, uh, you know, professional expertise to provide information to the council to then deliberate about decisions on the bases of the appeal. And so there's no position other than providing that technical expertise for consideration. At times on complex projects, there may be, uh, you know, professional disagreement. One of the points that I do want to make and turn, turn to staff to clarify is when it comes to the traffic reports that were cited, the council members asked questions about the water district consultants, about the studies that they're referring to regarding the angled parking. And there wasn't very specific answer and I think there was a bit of confusion because it's the ASHTO report that refers to the 54% change in risk. So if we could just turn to staff to clarify some of the points that they heard to correct before council's deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think before we dive headfirst into deliberation, at least I have some clarifying questions from staff also. Um, staff, did you want to give some clarifier, clarifiers before we?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, uh, the ongoing, uh, contention that there's a, a key distinction between the collector versus arterial distinction, um, as indicated during the staff report. Uh, that's, uh, you know, a distinction without a difference in this instance in the sense that as the general plan has indicated, the requirement to accommodate the multiple modes of transportation, we've shown the general plan requires the same modal accommodation between the two, um, between arterial and collector. And so in that sense, um, there's not a difference for multimodal accommodation. I think the appellant was trying to draw a distinction of arterial versus collector in, in the sense of the supposed travel speeds. Uh, but what we have is data showing that while the travel, well, the posted speed limit on Francisco Boulevard is 25 miles per hour, more than half, well over half of the observed, uh, vehicles on Francisco were traveling above the posted speed limit. And in some instances, as high as 40 to 44 miles per hour, which is a very high travel speed. Certainly there are other interventions that could be taken, be it police enforcement, traffic calming projects. But the reality is those measures are not fully in place and that is the existing condition with respect to the construction of angled parking were to occur today if the project were approved. And so those safety conditions as identified by staff are and will continue for the foreseeable future to be present. In addition, there was the, the question of, you know, the appellant identifying many studies that show the safety of angled parking. I'm not sure that those are the conclusions that I heard. There were comparisons about parallel versus angled parking and is, um, you know, one safer than the other. But I think what we have demonstrated, uh, through staff's citations is that angled parking is less safe than parallel parking. And I don't know that we've had any compelling data that, uh, says parallel parking is less safe than angled parking. And so we just want to keep pointing back to the studies that staff has identified that shows increased, uh, safety risks with respect to the angled parking configuration. Are there other, other points?
Yes, uh, thank you, Christian, and thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, so I, I would like to, um, address some of the differing opinions uh, that are, you know, that are, you're hearing maybe from staff and from the water district. Uh, so, uh, the water district, as Christian has mentioned, hasn't provided anything to demonstrate that it's safe. Uh, in the previous meeting, I made a statement that their traffic study has only stated that it was safe to physically come out of the angle parking without entering the northbound lane. So this was not rebuted in the last meeting and it hasn't been rebuted, um, from their appeal letters. So, uh, there, and then the traffic engineer from the applicant did say that during that meeting, there are safety concerns with the angle parking, similarly to, um, with the bike lane that was just said right now. There are safety concerns if you were to put a class two bike lane behind the angle parking. And similarly with what their report has said about the angle parking, um, what I just said in the beginning of verbatim about the traffic calming measures, um, it, it, it doesn't explicitly say that in their report that the angle parking is a traffic calming measure as well. And, uh, and so the, the data is not there. Staff has provided significant data and we have provided data to address the concerns about the classification of the street that, uh, you know, regardless of the classification, there is still going to be safety concerns. Francisco falls within the daily trips in the staff report. Um, that falls into the concern for, you know, the safety for angled parking. Uh, we mentioned again, top speeds for, um, the street is at 44 miles per hour. And the sharos they mentioned before was that it's best for 25 miles per hour. Uh, and typically cars do not stop until they get close to the parking spaces. Um, or, oh, sorry, they don't get, they don't stop until they get close to the stop signs. So there are parking spaces along the frontage of the street. So they're, they're not going to be slowing down until they get, usually get closer to the stop signs. And I, I want to agree with the slide that was shown on TMS for, for the accidents on Francisco that, you know, there, there's no accidents on Francisco. It confirms our data that was used from TMS for our local roadway and safety plan that Francisco is not on the high injury network, but Palmetto is. And, uh, there were no slides shown on Palmetto. There are collisions on Palmetto in front of the angle parking. And, um, yeah, we can pull that data from TMS as well. And I'll pass it over to Ingrid to address some of the other studies that were mentioned in Ashito and, um, Oregon DOT.
Thank you. I was just going to add that for, uh, as he mentioned, Francisco is currently not on the high injury network. Uh, Palmetto and Manor Drive currently are on the high injury network. Um, and the angled parking is one of the contributing factors to them being on the high injury network. Uh, professionally, we avoid repeating roadway characteristics from high injury network corridors on streets that are not on the high injury network. So that is one of the main reasons we would not be recommending to put angled parking on it, on Francisco Boulevard. Um, unless it's absolutely necessary.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time, please?
Uh, from the research? Sure. Uh, Francisco is not on the high injury network. Uh, Palmetto and Manor Drive are on the high injury network. Um, they are on the high injury network. The angled parking is a contributing factor to them being on the high injury network. Um, and professionally, we avoid repeating roadway characteristics, such as the angled parking, uh, from high injury network corridors onto corridors that are not on the high injury network. Um, and I wanted to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, please finish your point.
Uh, it was a different point, so.
Oh. Uh, well, just on that point, uh, in sum, uh, as City Manager Woodhouse pointed out, you know, to some extent, there are differing expert opinions. Uh, it's the council's job to weigh the evidence. I think what staff has tried to do is, is make a compelling argument that our position and opinion that angled parking would be unsafe is supported by substantial evidence. So if the council were to reach that conclusion, there would be sufficient evidence to support that action, while you may consider other viewpoints and data, you know, as presented by the appellant as well.
The other point I wanted to rebut on was, um, they made a statement that angled parking is a traffic calming measure. And as a professional, I have never seen that on a list of traffic calming measures. A traffic calming measure is something like a speed hump or, um, a median island or raised crosswalks, which actually force people to slow down that are traveling on the corridor. Um, and a angled parking is not one of those. Thank you.
Were there any other clarifying remarks or?
That's all for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So, um, I have some questions for staff and I think my colleagues might also. So, uh, one of the commenters, uh, referenced the note. And first of all, I agree wholeheartedly that the comparison between that intersection out Palmetto and Manor, um, it doesn't resonate with me that they are similar circumstances. Um, I appreciate that if you're to try and draw a comparison, maybe that's as close as we get. But again, it doesn't quite resonate with me that there's a similarity there. Every time I cross that intersection towards the Walgreens, I'm saying a little prayer to myself that someone doesn't back into me as I'm crossing over. And, um, the point was well taken by one of the speakers that, well, another difference is you're actually speeding up when you're going past that intersection behind those parallel spots. Whereas Francisco, if there was parallel, diagonal spots there, told you I'd be doing it all night. Um, if there were diagonal spots there, you'd actually be slowing down because there's a stop sign you're going toward. Now, I think I heard you say a moment ago that, well, you wouldn't be stopping, uh, slowing down until too late, was I think what I, the gist I got. Um, I'm hoping you can elaborate. I'll, um, admit that as a lifelong Pacifica resident, uh, I have spent some time of my, uh, driving career barreling down that street at unsafe speeds. So I appreciate that that's factored into staff analysis. But the point was well taken by the commenter that, um, somebody heading in that direction would be slowing down rather than the intersection where one would be speeding up. Um, staff, can you help me navigate that a bit or comment?
Um, the speed survey that actually the, um, that Santos, um, did, showed top speeds of 40 to 45 miles an hour, even though there currently is a stop sign there. So I think that in and of itself will show you that people will not stop. I will not slow down until they, they are close enough to the stop sign. Um, so, and the angled parking is proposed for the entire curb base, for the entire, um,
I'm sorry, can I, there's not a stop sign there now, right? They were looking in their traffic study to add a stop sign.
At Clarendon.
Oh, the stop sign at Clarendon.
At Francisco and Clarendon.
Right, but I thought.
There's a stop sign at Francisco and Clarendon and so they're talking about?
There, there's a stop sign on Clarendon. There's not a stop sign on Francisco currently.
Well, the intersection of Clarendon and Francisco, when you're going south.
I believe the, the point was that.
Yeah, that's what they were adding.
Even though there's a stop sign at Francisco and Clarendon, the speed survey data shows speeds of, you know, whatever the range is, but over 40 miles an hour, despite there being a stop sign that cars need to stop at.
I'm still confused. I, I thought there wasn't a stop sign if you're traveling on Francisco across Clarendon. And that was part of their study, that they wanted to add a stop sign and the data didn't justify.
Brighton, which is the, um, intersecting street before Clarendon.
Oh, on Brighton is where you were sta- ah, I'm sorry. That was my mistake. Okay.
You know, there is another comparison, um, which would be Mazetti's because those people are slowing down to stop and that's angled parking there. So it's the same, it would be similar to this in the angled parking with people here also making U-turns. People there making U-turns too to get into, and people would do the same thing here.
But we don't know if the accidents are because of the angled parking or because of the terrible intersection.
Well, that's before, but that's before the intersection.
Yeah.
That, the Mazetti's angled parking is before the intersection. The intersection is horrid and everybody knows that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think regarding, if I might, regarding that comparison is, uh, on, on Manor, you have a stop sign, you have a stop sign at each end of that block. So, so people are coming off of a stop sign, going one block, a stop sign. So the speeds are going to be a lot lower on that one particular block. Whereas on, on Francisco, uh, cars get up to a pretty good speed.
Yeah, but people are, people are driving down that street to go onto the on-ramp. So I don't know about you.
Yeah.
But when I turn that corner, I'm going way, I'm going faster than I should. In Man- you know, right there, Manor and Walgreens. So I don't think it's a very good, um, comparison.
Yeah, the, the other issue there, those are all compact spaces. I actually went and measured them. They're only eight feet wide. And, um, and they're shallower too and some cars actually hang out into the street. Um, and then the very first part, you have to actually back into the intersection to get out. So it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not the same at all. Um, I, I did want to ask the tra- um, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, our, our traffic engineer. Here, can you tell me more about the ASHTO report? Who, who ASHTO is? It sounded like that was a, um, an association for, um, uh, anyway, more like freeway kind of roads and, 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 and what was this report actually studying? I mean, and what types of roads and what types of application? Um, I'm just hoping for a little bit more detail because, because that, that's the statistic that, that really bothers me is, is trying to understand, you know, what is 50% more dangerous um, about the angled parking in that report?
Yeah, the report is from, um, ASHTO Highway Safety Manual. Um, I know it has the word highway on there, but it does encompass all types of roads. Um, and what it is used for, it's, um, a national guiding document that we use to calculate, um, the effects of different types of designs and different types of roadway characteristics on crashes. And so what it looks at is if you put angled parking instead of parallel parking, how will that affect your crashes? And so, um, it gives you a bunch of calculations and details that you don't, uh, need the details of. Um, but it's basically just by the fact that it has, um, that, um, that characteristic as one of the items that helps reduce, like, the, on that manual, it means it's a characteristic that helps reduce, um, crashes converting from angle to.
So it's, so it's just a general recommendation? It doesn't say specifically what kinds of streets, what kind of traffic flows, what kind of speeds when it gives that number?
It does have a lot of detail to it and, and has kind of different factors and different numbers for different types of streets, um, different land uses. Um, and so the, you can do the calculations too then, um, for your specific site, your specific location to, to get to, to a final number.
So you're saying that this particular street with this street width with 2,000 to 3,000 cars a day, up to 45 miles an hour, would be 50% plus more dangerous according to what you're reading?
I believe that's the calculation that my colleague did, um, who unfortunately was not able to be here tonight. I believe that's where the 54% number comes from.
Um, so I had a concern when I heard the notion that, um, the water district never got feedback on their first three applications. Can staff comment on that, please? It was, um, specifically in terms of the third driveway.
Uh, I can comment about the incompleteness items. We call the submittals, uh, our comments back to the applicants are called incompleteness items. So we had issued, uh, incompleteness items back in 2022 in April, July and September. So three times they received an incompleteness item asking them to remove the angled parking, uh, because.
So not the angled parking. We're talking about the third driveway.
The driveway. Uh, Stephanie has some details on that one.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Mayor Big Stick. So the planning staff that reviewed the application during that time is no longer here. So I can only speak to what I see as part of the official record. Um, so it seems that during the first, um, and second review, the planning staff that, um, wrote the letter only provided items that were needed to deem the application complete or other, um, similar items regarding design or. similar items regarding design or policy that were not needed to deem the application complete, but were still of concern. The third driveway was put as a condition of approval from the first review back in April of 2022, and the draft conditions of approval do not seem, it doesn't seem that they were provided to the applicant as staff was reviewing each review. So I'm not sure as to why that was done, why the draft conditions of approval were not provided to the applicant during those first two reviews, but that's what occurred.
Presumably, we would have, in other circumstance, preferred to have given feedback rather than it coming at a late hour.
Yes, typically staff, if we have conditions of approval from other departments, we put them on those completeness letters for the applicant to know as soon as possible what their draft conditions of approval may be. Unfortunately, in this case, that did not occur.
Okay. I have one more question before I turn to Councilmember Beer.
Thank you.
There was some question around condition of approval, number 11, which has to do with the moving of the RV spot, simply that there seemed to be some confusion around it, and I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to clarify that condition of approval and to coin a term, unconfuse it.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I guess in my assessment, this condition, you know, clarifies that there is a connection between the project and the existence of the temporary safe parking space. It acknowledges that the construction of the project would have adverse impacts on the occupants of that space, and the conditions are, you know, met to need to relocate the space during the course of construction, or pre-construction activities that may need access to the area around the vehicle that's parked in the space. In my opinion, it presents a pretty low bar for the appellant. If this condition were to be imposed, they need to write a letter to the city manager requesting the space to be relocated. I think the way it's written is appropriate, and it's flexible enough so that the city doesn't need to monitor the progress of the Water District's project if it were to be approved, but the Water District, when it knows it's about to commence on any of these qualifying activities, can submit the request to the city manager. And so I think it strikes the right balance of addressing the project-related impacts on the space and giving the Water District control of the timing of when they would be ready to proceed to pre-construction or construction activities to ensure that the request is timely filed at that point in time. Thank you very much. Councilmember Beer.
Oh, okay, thank you. Could you put up Exhibit A, which is, sorry, I gotta put my glasses on, packet page 650? Could you just put up the rendering, please, so I can look at that? And then I have a question, oh, I think we have to open public comment, I mean, public hearing.
So you need to ask a question of the appellant?
I have a question from the Water District.
Okay.
So I'll reopen the public hearing so that we can ask a question of the appellant.
Okay, but it'll help me a lot to be able to see the rendering up on the screen.
City Clerk Coffee, I think this rendering is in the staff presentation. If we can try that first, it might be easier for you.
Oh, thank you.
And Councilmember Beer, just to confirm, it's the one that has Exhibit A as the label, and it's a view of the building?
Correct. Because my question is, did you, do you have to say that you're opening up the hearing?
I already did.
Okay, great. Well, my question to the Water District would be, so looking at the rendering, and it'll come up in a second, can you explain to me from my eyes, because it appears to me that you have deliberately moved in the angled parking, right? And so from what I see on the rendering, I see the parallel parking, like there's a car there, a red car, and then it appears that the other parking spaces have been moved in, so I would really like some details about that, and, yeah, but the rendering's not there yet, but that's okay. I think you know what I'm talking about.
Not sure I understand, have the other cars looked like they're moved in, the ones that are parallel in front of the headquarters?
No, so the rendering shows one parallel car-
Yes.
Parking.
Yes.
And then the other angled parking spaces, and to me, it looks like they're pushed in, like you have directly moved them in.
Correct.
Can you explain why and how far?
Oh, oh, sure.
What does that do to the sidewalk?
Oh, sure, the cars were pushed, this one could be fine, the-
Sarah, what's this?
The end of the vehicle, the end of the vehicle would align with the same kind of side door of the vehicle in a parallel space. That's the distance that we moved the sidewalk in.
Yeah. So the back edge of the cars, whether they're parallel parked or angled parked, is the same line up and down?
Yeah, so that, so that the back-
So they're not further into the street?
Car wouldn't be sticking out any further than a car that was parallel parked would be sticking out.
Would it give it more, does it give it more room when it pulls out, backs out?
Correct, correct. And it, so I think that the standard that I'm aware of is like nine feet wide and 18 foot long for a diagonal spot, and we size them at nine feet wide, 19 feet long, so we're even giving it a more generous length than required, so it would most likely be further off the street than the other cars that are parallel parked.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And other than that, I have like a whole bunch of comments, so maybe we're going to go like item by item?
Wait, while she's up there.
Oh, yeah, while you're up there.
My point earlier about the sidewalk, if you're looking at the same exact picture-
Which is not up on there, though.
Oh, I'm, page 650, which I'm looking at, it looks like there's barely any sidewalk.
Mr. Murdoch.
And I'm concerned, what?
Sorry, I was going to just try to get the correct rendering up. Do you know what slide in the presentation it is? Maybe you can advance to it.
So the sidewalks, I think are the pinch point at each corner of the diagonal parking would be four and a half feet wide. The current sidewalk is six feet wide in that location, so it would be pinched down at, just at the corner where that spot is located. The mandated width for a sidewalk would be four feet, and three feet is the pinch point for a accessible wheelchair. I know that if you go to the bus stop on Clarendon that's in front of our building, there's a bench and a trash can right next to each other that pinch down to, you know, that sidewalk is just barely three feet to the curb between that bench and the curb. But we have a resident who's, he's, you know, two or three times a day, he's circling the block, even on the tiny sidewalks, he has no trouble. I mean, he's, you know, he's in his wheelchair, and he's definitely able to get around that bus stop, no problem. So we don't feel like there's going to be a big pinch of the sidewalk to make that inaccessible for our pedestrians. Also, at the corners, you're going to get a lot more pedestrian space because you have those bulbouts. And there's going to, it's going to be really friendly at the intersections, it's going to be making it a lot safer for pedestrians around, and I'm sure folks in a wheelchair as well would appreciate these larger places to get across the streets, which is something that doesn't currently occur at that intersection.
Thank you.
I have one more question, maybe it's more for your architect, but-
Thank you, Sarah, so much.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
I was just looking at the, I was thanking Sarah.
Oh, for the drawing, uh-huh.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
If you don't think about the bulbouts, and especially the one by the entry, I was looking at exactly how the car is laid out too, that, you know, the way the parallel parking stuck out into the street was the same as the 19 feet, which you say is more. I don't know if this is ever a possibility, but if, it seems, if, for some reason, if we approve the angled parking today and it became an issue, it seems like it would be fairly easy to convert back to parallel parking. I don't know from a legal point of view and the project approvals, but just physically, architecturally, the spaces, the space that's left over is the same to hold the cars that way.
I don't think it would be precluded, no?
Yeah, okay.
Were there any other questions for Manager Carr or the appellant in general before we close the public hearing again? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to any further staff questions, and of course, deliberation. That question around reverting it back to parallel spots if we should find there's an issue, would staff like to comment on that?
I'm sorry, you mean whether or not the city could revert it back? Or what is the question specifically?
Just process-wise, if-
Well, the city would have no control over that. So once we, if the discretionary permit were approved tonight and allowed angled parking, the only way that that condition would be changed is if the applicant unilaterally, voluntarily came in to change it. The city would have no control over whether or not it would be modified at a future date.
I'm going to get this one out of the way, rather than include it in my deliberation. No, I'm not, I'm going to include it in my deliberation. So if there's no further questions for staff, feel free to start chatting about it. Councilmember Beer has suggested we go item by item.
Oh, please, yeah, we're going to definitely need direction to keep us on track, in my brain, anyway.
No problem.
We'll go back for them all over the place.
So just go down the line, you want to start with number 11?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to start with number 11.
Would you specifically like to begin?
I would love to begin with number 11.
I'm, I was, I'm confused why number 11 is even in this appeal, and let me tell you why. Because, for one thing, what we're talking about here is not just moving a vehicle, it's moving a person. It is a person who is in one of our safe parking spots that we are responsible for. So in order to move this person and take care of the person in the vehicle, a lot of things have to happen to make that happen. It's not just as easy as, and the Water District has been great at, okay, you know, we can put it here, we can put it there, totally appreciate all those ideas and your willingness to do that. But one thing that I heard from your very nice attorney tonight was, we would have moved it already. And to me, that was, that was a triggering statement for me, because it's not that easy, and it's a person that we are taking care of, and I will say that again and again. So in order for us to do that, we have to work with the Resource Center, we have to work with wherever we're going to put them, we're going to have to figure out all these things. And so to me, it's very important that in order, to make sure, sorry, this makes me emotional, in order to make sure that we are taking care of this person, who is our responsibility, then it's really important that we work together as a team to make sure that that happens. And so I don't know about the language, that seems confusing or weird, but I don't see why we can't work as a team to take care of that person. And whatever the language that needs to be included in this condition, I would love to hear what my colleagues have to say about it. This is probably the most passionate item that I have tonight, and I appreciate you hearing me out, and again, this is a person that we placed in the public right of way, and now we need to make sure they're taken care of, and I think we can do that together. I have thought that we could do this together the entire time. So when I hear folks calling in saying, well, I don't, you know, you're not doing this, that, we have worked incredibly hard to create a partnership relationship with the Water Department, and I think that all of this crap, sorry, that's probably not the right word to use in a public setting, but all the things that created all of this issue, right, gave us an opportunity to have a relationship with you that we never had before. And so for that, I am very grateful, because now I know all about water, and I can see still, regardless of everything that has happened, that we are able to work together as a team to figure this out. And so I'm off my soapbox now.
I will note, Councilmember Beer, and certainly I've been engaging with you in that ad hoc committee, so I can share your perspective, though slightly less impassioned to the point of saying, it seems that of the issues brought up by the appeal, it was certainly the least bone-like of the items brought, and, you know, when asked, the Water District suggested that the wording was something that was unclear to their sensibility in the moment. We asked staff to clarify that. I don't know if City Attorney wants to weigh in, but it seems as though we put into word what we needed to in order to make happen ultimately the safety of somebody who otherwise will be impacted by this construction, and it seems the least contentious item that is before us tonight.
And to that question, I do agree with Planning Director Murdoch that it is clear. I don't believe it's vague, ambiguous, I think it is fairly clear. Can you, I'm sorry, can you just point me to what page number the actual, exact condition is worded?
Mr. Murdoch, can you point to that?
560 is where the full list of COAs begins, so if you look at 561, you'll find it. One. If we-
I have it on packet page 542, I don't know if it's-
Okay. If we can discuss what a more collaborative approach would be to this item, it would be really helpful.
Five what? I'm sorry, Christian, 541?
542. The reference made by the mayor was to the Planning Commission resolution, so just to be fair, I think we should look at the City Council draft resolution for tonight.
Yeah.
In case there's other questions or modifications that are desired.
Thank you.
Condition number 11?
Yes.
So I, from what I remember hearing from your attorney, I think-
Oh, I'm on six.
The confusion is, it doesn't say here that it's the city's responsibility to move the space, right? Is that maybe, what is, we can always ask the applicant again.
What'd you ask, Christian?
It doesn't seem to say here that it's the city's responsibility to move the space, and their contention is that they can't move the space, that the city has to do that. And so I'm just wondering if there's something we can add.
Well, City Attorney, would you like to help clarify?
Well, normally, it, when we're talking about conditions of approval on a project by a developer, it is the developer's responsibility to address all impacts associated with that project, and this clearly is, the only reason the city has to move that spot is because of the district's construction of, or remodeling of the headquarters. So this, this condition is drafted as it would with any other project that came before the council. If the council chooses to treat this project differently than all others, for whatever reason, we can do that. And, and so it normally is not the responsibility of the city. If the council feels that it should be, then, you know, give us that direction, and then we can draft, you know, that, that could be done with a simple sentence, but the point, the reason it's not in there is because that is not the normal practice for responsibility for, it usually is not the city's responsibility to fulfill conditions of approval, it is the responsibility of the applicant.
I understand that, for more construction-related things, this seems very different. I mean, they wouldn't have the ability to move the space on their own without, without us saying it was okay, or-
So that is what the condition of approval says, is that we will say it's okay? The mechanism by- The mechanism by which we will have the opportunity to say it's okay is the letter we're asking them to write when the time is right because of the concerns for the person and the vehicle.
And the condition as it's written, it provides flexibility. Either party could end up accomplishing the relocation, but it does need to start with the request by the Water District to the city manager so that the timing and the need for the relocation is clear and known. And as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, the city staff is very much supportive of this project. As we would with another, any other public agency, we will do everything we reasonably can to make their project successful when they get to this point in terms of a need to relocate the space. But as the City Attorney mentioned, in the first instance, the burden's on the applicant for the development project that's causing the impact. From there, the city can work with the applicant to result in the best outcome for the relocation.
Can we just say that? Can we just add that language? I mean, I guess for my sake, that's what I would like to happen. But it's not clear to me by reading the language here, and maybe that's where the confusion was. I don't know. And maybe I'm nitpicking. I just want to be super clear that for the reasons why it has to move and then how we are going to do it together to take care of this person. So, I think the reasons why it has to move is very clear, that it's a condition of approval for the project, that that's the only reason why it has to move. And then the rest we do together, so. I will say that we have been working with the district cooperatively to resolve this. And in those discussions, I will say that both the district and the city have made clear that the responsibility to move it is not entirely with the district. Now, we have not, those are separate discussions. If the council wants to... My suggestion is that if the council wants to have the responsibility to move the site, we can put that language in here. There's nothing preventing us from doing that. But to talk about how we're going to work together, that's just not appropriate unless you have vague language, because I don't know which would satisfy, if that would satisfy the district. But we could have some vague language that would say, and the city will work with the district to determine how best to relocate. But that, as the Planning Director says, that this condition is flexible enough to allow that. In my opinion, is that we have been working cooperatively with the district in separate discussions.
Yes.
So, I don't see a need to amend this condition of approval to make it more clear. To me, it is clear. And to your point, I don't think it makes it more clear, but we could put more language in there that says, the city will work with the district in relocating the spot. But, you know, if that would satisfy the council, then we can certainly add that to the condition. And to me, because our community isn't understanding how much we've been working with the Water District, it does not appear that that's been happening. And so, I also want our community to understand how hard we've been working to work with you all.
If I might make a comment on this. For me, the most salient reasoning that just made a lot of sense to me about why the letter needs to come from North Coast County Water was made by Director Murdoch when he stated that it would be removing what would otherwise be a requirement of the city to track the project's timeline, to know and to make a decision about when it's the exact right time to do this. Really, that's going to be Manager Carr's, she's going to have that giant blueprint with the project, you know, steps all laid out. And it's going to be clear that whether it's a construction activity, a pre-construction activity, what it is that requires it, and that is the basis for writing the letter of request. And I just wanted to clarify with the, so for me, that was the justification for why is this necessary? Otherwise, they're just guessing. And that doesn't, it's not appropriate for the city to make that determination. You won't have it. You'll, they're working with the builder and the designers and everybody. That's my view of why it made sense. And I'll just go out on a limb and say, I like keeping condition 11 exactly as it is. I mean, we can amend it for your purposes, Mary, but keeping, allowing it to stay is my position, whether amended or not.
Sorry, if I may. I agree, a letter is necessary so we know the schedule and, you know, they're very optimistic about their building permits, but things can take a lot longer and we don't want to move someone until we have to, right? It's an expense, it's a disruption. Maybe this means opening the public hearing again, but I'd really liked, it breaks my heart that we're in a lawsuit with a Water District that's our partner agency. And I want to make sure, I don't feel like I know exactly what it is that they're objecting to, and I want to make sure if there is a word or a phrase that they would like to add.
So, I want to make sure that we keep that lawsuit discussion very clear.
I'm not talking about it, I'm just, their attorney raised an objection to the language, and I'm not totally sure I understood what the exact objection was. I don't think it had anything to do with the letter. I think it had to do with who's responsible for moving the space, which I don't see in here. So, I would just like to make sure we know, maybe we can ask again if he can just repeat that to me, what their objection was to the language here and if they think there's something missing.
So, I feel like we had the opportunity to hear what the objection was, and I think that largely what I heard was they were asking for clarity, which I think is the point of this discussion we're having now. I think at this point, what's salient is that we are clear on the purpose of this condition and that we are clear why we are including it if we so choose. Personally, I am of the similar mind to Councilmember Beckmeyer and would certainly vote to deny that part of the appeal. Let me just take a quick stock, and if there's more confusion, I can certainly reopen the public hearing to try and alleviate it. But Councilmember Beckmeyer, did I hear that you're on the same page there?
Yes. Well, and it says, right, on page, packet page 509, right under the, where the appellant challenges the Planning Commission decision, it says, "The appellant argues that they do not have the power to move the space, and accordingly, the condition should be revised." So, the letter is fine. Like, yeah, write a letter. But how can we address their concern about having power to move the space?
So, I hear the Water District's concern, but I believe by virtue of the fact that we have this condition here, we are suggesting the mechanism by which we are empowering the process of moving that space, which begins with a letter from the Water District and ends with the approval of City Manager. Mayor Protem?
No, I haven't said anything. Well, because if I say what I want to say, I know, I have to think about this.
Well, I...
Mr. First City Attorney, while you're thinking.
Well, okay, here I go. I'm wondering if the whole angled parking has only to do with this temporary parking program? And if that's part of why they, why that's so important to have the angled parking because no oversized vehicle can therefore park.
If I may? I would suggest that we've certainly heard some feedback from the Water District this evening questioning some of the motivation of our staff. And I think that it has not been helpful for my deliberative process, and it may not be helpful for our deliberative process to second-guess the intentions of the Water District in the case of this particular condition of approval that is being questioned merely to understand why we are including it and to either, at the end of the evening, which is rapidly approaching unless we make a motion soon, tell them either we are going to deny that basis of appeal or uphold that basis for appeal. And so far, Councilmember Beckmeyer and myself are coming to the conclusion that it is worth denying that particular basis of appeal because after addressing the concern, we've heard from them tonight that there was confusion over the wording, we think that it makes sense at this point to us.
And City Attorney did say that there was a possibility of adding some language if others were agreeable to that. I don't know what that language would be.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
So, City Manager, would it be, while not absolutely necessary, in terms of clarifying the action, it's the after-action, I think, that is getting confusing. That's what I heard in the questions from North Coast County from Manager Carr. So, I will fully accept it if you say, no, we cannot put that language in. But here's what I'm wondering is, in terms of what happens after the request is made, which is what I hear Councilmember Beer focusing on. And while I appreciate you so much, and I would want to put in Mary language in here, I don't think we can. But in terms of after-action, City Manager, I'm looking at packet page 542, and it's towards the bottom of the paragraph. Accordingly, prior to the commencement of any construction activities, da-da-da-da-da, applicant shall submit a request to the city manager's office. The way it reads now is applicant shall submit a request to the city manager's office to relocate the TSPP space to another location deemed suitable in the city manager's sole discretion. I am proposing that we consider adding a few words. And the, this is how I envision it being worded. Applicant shall submit a request to the city manager's office for the city to work with the district to relocate the TSPP space to another location deemed suitable in the city manager's sole discretion. I'm trying to get the collaboration piece in there, Mary, because what I'm hearing you say is we need to work together. And what this doesn't say is what happens. So, if it's not okay to put the two in, then, okay. But does that meet the action that's going to happen, right? The letter's one thing, but why are we doing the letter? So, something will happen.
I think that language is fine. Provides more clarity. I think that if, you know, majority of the council agree, I think that would be a good addition to make to...
Thank you.
Condition of Approval 11.
Did you get that, City Clerk?
I got it.
Yes.
Okay, quickly down the line, we have consensus? Yes? Okay. So, number 11 taken care of, four to go, two more consideration items, public comments, council comments, staff comments, and it's 10:45. Who would like to make the motion?
To extend?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we extend the meeting to 11:30.
I'll second.
I think we might need more time than that.
I move that we extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
Okay, then we need a break.
We have a motion in a second. City Attorney, are we good? Please vote.
The motion to extend the meeting to midnight made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember Vodarlas passes unanimously.
Okey-dokey. If we're going down the line, this brings us to basis of appeal number 12, the angled parking. If anyone would like to begin, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I'm always happy to begin. Actually, I take that back in this instance, I'm not happy to begin. You know, I spent somewhere between a half an hour and 45 minutes of my life earlier this afternoon driving around every angled parking spot in town. I'm getting the hang of this angled, all right.
Got it, got it.
I just had to get rid of the diagonal and it's angled. And I did so, you know, not because I don't care, not because I felt misled, but because I do care and it weighs heavily on me. And, you know, it's late at night, but pardon an anecdote. When I started on Planning Commission, early on, there was a project over here at approximately Beach and Paloma in which we were asked to allow this development on the coastline. And ultimately, the bone of contention for me was, I had this vivid recollection of the sinkholes on Beach Boulevard in 2016. The year was now 2019 by the time I'm deliberating on this. And it occurred to me that there was no second way out. There was just the one way, you had to get to Paloma because it was over in the corner. There's actually an alleyway behind the adjoining apartment building or whatever, and they wouldn't let the applicant use that as a second way out. And so, what occurred to my mind in that moment was, well, look, you know, I have this visceral recollection of a sinkhole, and in a worst-case scenario where it's pouring rain in the middle of winter, there's another sinkhole, and somebody who decided to live there starts having a heart attack, they can't get out through the alleyway because the neighbors won't allow it. And if I vote yes, and somebody dies because of my decision tonight in good conscience, I will not be able to live with myself. That's how I was looking at it then, that's my sensibility. And so, that's why I spent 45 minutes of my life driving around Pacifica, looking at diagonal parking, reviewing the video of the Planning Commission meeting for the second time, and trying to understand in a simple, clear way for me whether or not I think that diagonal parking is safe. Limited visibility is the simple version. I know how quickly I've driven down that road. You know, as I'm getting older in my life, I'm trying to be a wiser driver, but I know how I used to drive, and I'm not oblivious to the fact that others probably drive similarly. We do have clear general plan policy that suggests that we are trying to have bicycles drive down that road. And between those simple notions, you know, and I do think it looks better. I don't think it's fair to compare it to Palmetto at Manor. I do think it would be an amenity that serves the customers in a better way. I do think it would make it a more attractive project. I do think it would be better for the business across the street. And what concerns my sensibility is, you know, I haven't heard a compelling argument that our safety concerns from the city level are to be easily disregarded, and that weighs heavily upon me. And so, that's my fourth sense at this point, and I welcome any other deliberation.
This is the hardest one for me. And I'm a person who likes a lot of data, and I don't think I got enough data from either side. And that's really frustrating. I mean, reading that Oregon study, I don't think there's a... I mean, reading that Oregon study, I don't think there's a difference between the safety, between the two. It's just, it's a little more unsafe just because there's more people in it. It has nothing to do with the safety of the spaces themselves. The Ashdod study, that bothers me, but I don't feel like I have enough information. I also, just in terms of the beautification and so forth, I really appreciate the bulbous and the landscaping and so forth that came with the angled parking scheme. And I actually asked on Friday Public Works to look into that a little bit, and Mr. Murdock. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but they did confirm that bulbous could, I mean, we don't have to stick, if we say we're doing parallel parking, we don't have to stick with what we have now. You can still do the bulbous, you know, on the edges and even perhaps one in the center, though that might lose, you know, another parking space. It's the bikes that bother me and whether, because I, I'm, maybe we can go back to staff a little bit to ask about the bike lanes. But we talked about adding separate bike lanes and the possibility on that block where we have a little bit more width. But if we pull up a map of all of Francisco as you head further north, we don't have that extra width there. So, maybe Public Works can comment on that. I would think that you'd want the same consistent bike path all the way down, which would then be a shared bike path with the street. Because that then allows a bike to be more in the middle of the road versus in this little lane right by the parking, right?
So, well, you're waiting for an answer, correct? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Roland.
Yeah, it would take some time to figure out where exactly the right-of-way is in this location once we're northbound of Paloma. I think it's the area in question here. I believe if there were Caltrans in this area, we would have to seek approval in order to continue to extend that and get some public access easements there.
I'm mostly looking, like, the north part of Francisco out, right, if you're heading north, right before Paloma where there's parking on both sides, and we wouldn't be eliminating any parking there. I don't, I don't think there's room for separate bike lanes there.
I agree.
I agree.
Not an engineer.
I think we would need some time to look at the dimensioning here, but the right-of-way on Francisco is consistent at 50 feet. So, if it's in the center line, we will have 50 feet on both sides.
I think, I think the property lines and the right-of-ways may be the same, but the bridge guardrail and so forth restrict the width. Where there's landscaping down further on Francisco, there isn't that closer to Paloma. I've driven by it a couple times in the last couple days. Think about that, too. Anyway, you can think about that. Let's let Mary ask her.
This is the hardest one. Quite frankly, the angled spaces in this project, they just don't bother me very much, and I think I've said that before. I do sit on City and County Associations of Government Bike and Pedestrian Committee. Having said that, the data that, Christine, I appreciate what you said because I feel like the data that I saw wasn't enough for me to really see if, how dangerous it is. So, I feel like there was, like, data here and data there, and they kind of, like, evened each other out. And one thing, when it does come to future funding, and we just went over this at our last B-PAC meeting, all the scores and the points for the OBAG, which is One Bay Area Grants, you lose points for, you know, places that aren't as safe. And so, there would be a concern there that in the future, that we could lose points on grant applications. And the only reason why I say that, because I know, because I spent 20 hours reviewing a bunch of different applications and scoring applications this past year. And so, I know all of the technicalities that they look for in these, in these funding. So, future funding for a priority development area could be affected by that. But still, having said that, when I look at the renderings, I feel like there was space that was created to make more room to pull out. There's bulbous, like, I think it looks nice, when looks doesn't really matter if someone's going to get hurt. So, this one's really hard, but I'm leaning towards, towards, to being in favor of the angled parking.
I agree that on the renderings, it looked like the people had the same amount of space to back up as you would if you parallel parked. I agree with Sue DeGruy that I have issues with, with the angled parking because my car's a 2014, and I don't have a backup camera. And I read that most people have backup cameras. I don't think most people have backup cameras. So, I don't think that was a good reasoning why, why there should be angled parking. I'm concerned about safety. I'm concerned about the bikes. And excuse me for my earlier comment. I apologize. It was not in the sense of cooperation, and I apologize for that. But this is a really hard question for me, very difficult.
Well, I guess it's for my turn to talk, isn't it?
You're the one who hasn't yet.
I was so careful to point that out. I have to say, I like the look of the angled parking. I think it really adds to the project. And I've struggled because when I read staff's report, I go, oh, yeah, that, well, safety, 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 safety. But I didn't hear enough, I felt like it was a half-half deal. I didn't feel like I had enough to go on. Christine's, Councilmember Bowles's point about the frequency of the number in the Oregon study makes sense to me. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer. I'm not, you know, I'm a council member, and I have to make a decision on an appeal. And for me, angled parking is what I would favor. So, how that translates into words about a motion or whatever, I need help with former planning commissioners. But I also have a question for the City Attorney on this. See, you got me started. Now, I'm never going to shut up. City Attorney, I was looking at the resolution. I forgot what page it's on, but it goes on at much length about all the reasons why the council, you know, be it further resolved, the council is voting to deny it, right? What do we do about that, all those pages in our resolution?
The council doesn't need to worry about that. The council needs to worry about how you want to rule on these specific appeal items. Once you rule on the items, then we're going to take a break, and I can work with the Planning Director to see what kind of revisions need to be made to the resolution. But until, until we know exactly where the council's going on all of these issues, we can deal with the resolution language later. I think the first task that you're all doing, you know, very well right now is sort of giving us sort of a straw vote on how you're going on each one of these appeal items, and I think you should just continue to do that. Do not worry about what the ultimate language is going to look like. We can deal with that at the time of, you know, the motions, or we can take a break, and then I can work with the Planning Director to figure out how we're going to amend the resolution and potentially conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Oh, if I may, Mayor, I wanted to get back to Councilmember Bowles's question about the bike lanes on Francisco. So, in this scenario, we will, we wouldn't be able to put in sharrows on Francisco on the northbound, so we would look into, if we didn't have right-of-way or potentially getting too close to some of the bridge area here, we would remove the parking in order to get a dedicated Class II lane in there. But that's just something that we're, you know, we're looking into really quickly right now. That's a potential option.
Ooh, that parking is really well-used on that corner at Paloma and Francisco. And isn't that in the coastal zone, which is, which is then a problem with the Coastal Commission if we're removing parking?
It has the potential to implicate a coastal development permit requirement. It doesn't mean the city couldn't approve it, but it may, you know, be more complex than areas outside of the coastal zone, for example.
So, I'm sorry, it's, Roland, were you saying that you would not do a sharrow on this street?
We would not be able to just because of the traffic speeds here. And, you know, the sharrows, as I mentioned, is more appropriate for 25 miles per hour, but they're, they're speeds approaching 40, 44 potentially on Francisco. So, we would be able to implement sharrows on Francisco.
Well, that, that leads me to believe this is, this would be a much more expensive and complicated approvals process to put any bike lanes on this street.
So, I mean, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Beer that, you know, the grant opportunities here would be impacted, potentially not being able to do projects without the bike lane, and the bike lane types of projects are the most abundant that are out there. So, we could potentially get grants to do this project, and we have been able to get grants for our sharp heart resurfacing project and then the sharp heart pedestrian improvements after they were designated as a PDA.
Do have a question following on yours, just to clarify something in my mind. And I appreciate you, you know, one of the data points we do have is the recorded speeds and that they are above the speed limit. And I've met Pacifica drivers, I am one, so that's not lost on me. What point in the road, where on the Francisco frontage of the Water District building, was that speed recorded?
I would have to defer that to the San Dis Traffic Engineers, but I would assume it's at Brighton, it's near Brighton and Francisco because that's where they were trying to use the warrants for a stop sign, and they needed that speed for a line-of-sight distance.
Okay.
And Adrian is nodding.
We've got a nod from the manager of the Water District suggesting it was at Brighton and Francisco. Thank you.
The bike lane's tipping me over to saying okay to the angled parking because I just, I don't really see that that's something that's going to be feasible to take out all that parking in that commercial area. I have a hard, I drive around when I try to go pick up my fish at table wine. I have a hard time finding a spot as it is.
So, if I understand correctly what we're saying, what you're, what we're understanding is that with or without the angled parking, it would be a really hard sell to put a bike lane of any kind there, period. So, that's by my count, three that are clearly in support of the angled parking, and two of us who are having difficulty but have not clearly made a statement.
I just want to clarify something you just said. When you said it would be a hard sell to put a bike lane there, period, you're talking about ever funded by anybody. Is that correct? I think I wasn't fully following the line of discussion this last question you asked, Christine.
Look, what Mr. Yip was saying was that a sharrow lane, so where he would, the bike would share the traffic lanes, is not acceptable there because of the speeds. And there isn't room at that block by Paloma without taking out parking, which I have an objection to. So, there's not really another way to put bikes there.
So, and I, I'm trying to clarify it in my mind because that's my theme, right? My understanding is, as it is, with parallel parking, it's already fairly dangerous for bikes down that road, and therefore, to the point, it would preclude ever developing a bike lane there. And, you know, I take it that step further and think, oh, maybe we should dissuade bikers from that road then because apparently it's not an issue that's going to be solved one way or the other. Okay. It actually makes me feel a lot better about the notion of putting parallel spots there. There's still the question of, I can't see the car coming toward me. But on the other hand, that's where that conversation around arterials and collectors, you know, I hiccuped there because knowing what a Pacifica driver looks like and that our traffic study clearly shows that we're going too fast, the damage that's going to be done is not 25 mile-per-hour damage. And that was one of the many questions I asked staff the other night. So, that is concerning in and of itself, but...
Mayor, if I may, I do just want to draw the council's attention to Packet Page 613. Several council members refer to the beautification component that they perceived in relation to the angled parking configuration. The yellow areas on that plan show landscaping that would be proposed with the angled parking. Based on the renderings, a lot of that lush landscaping density is coming from those small square planter areas in which the appellant has proposed to plant trees. I'm not seeing anything, and perhaps the city engineer can confirm, that would preclude those planters to be there in essentially that configuration while retaining the sidewalk. There's currently a planter area that runs in parallel to the Water District's property in that location. And so, the same landscaping effect could result from keeping that small planter area as proposed and the parallel parking spaces. So, you don't need the angled parking to accomplish that beautification component necessarily. Just wanted to clarify that. It's not, you know, all one or the other necessarily.
You bring up an interesting point, and I wasn't considering it as I was digging through the documents. Are you saying that those planters there are proposed to be trees?
Yes, based on the proposed landscaping plan. And that's what's, I think, demonstrating the visual lushness of the landscaping as part of the beautification component. Again, I'm, you know, interpreting that from the council statements, maybe there's other aspects that they're referring to in terms of beautification. But to me, that seems like a notable one that could be in either configuration without much difficulty.
That's actually helpful for me, and I don't know if there's a COA in there because I didn't look for it, but one thing that occurred to me, which frankly, there were bigger matters to discuss along the angled parking. But as I was looking at that picture, I was thinking, oh, if that overgrows, then somebody in a wheelchair is going to have problems, and maybe we should put a COA about landscaping and keeping it neat. But if those are trees and it's high enough above the mark anyway, then that would alleviate my concern. Is there a COA necessitating that it be trees, or is it already baked in?
So, essentially, there's a landscaping plan that's proposed. It is based on the angled parking configuration. If the project were ultimately approved, as approved by the Planning Commission, where the parallel parking spaces would be there, the applicant would still need to put together a landscaping plan substantially consistent with this, meeting the minimum zoning, you know, landscaping requirements, et cetera. And so, would it be precisely this plan? It's hard for me to say, but something substantially similar, for example, with multiple tree plantings, would, would be there in my mind.
And is there a condition in there to the satisfaction of Planning Director? I know that's often the language that's used.
Let me check. Typically, there's a final landscaping plan improvement or submission requirement, and I think it's condition approval number nine.
If we're keeping the angled parking, I'd love to just tweak it to make sure foliage doesn't become an issue. Any suggestion to make sure- If, any suggestion to make sure that there's a bump or something for most average tires so that the lip of the car doesn't go over the sidewalk would be helpful, too, if we need that language in there in order to do our best effort. Yeah, final landscape plan for the approval by the planning director.
Mayor, was your concern about including language about maintenance relative to sidewalk accessibility?
Yes.
So I could imagine adding language perhaps in the last sentence of condition number nine. Landscaping on the site shall be adequately maintained in helpful condition, including maintaining ongoing sidewalk access.
Should we directly put what kind of landscaping is supposed to be there or is that too much?
It's within the council's purview to specify that, as long as there's some relationship to a project component or impact.
I just figure if there's a tree rather than a bush, then it makes it a no-brainer and makes it easier on everyone.
Right. If you'd allow me a moment or two to figure out what that language would be specific to the tree.
Yeah, of course. In conversations with folks who are bound to a wheelchair, I've literally been driving around town, scoping out some of the foliage and various sidewalk sites, so it's actually on my mind.
Could we maybe talk about a different subject while we're waiting for...
Yeah, absolutely. Before we do, I wanted to check back in with Mayor Protem because, without quite committing, I'm leaning strongly at this point and I hear strong three consensus for angled parking.
For angled.
Have you shifted at all over the course of, not that we need a perfect consensus, but...
I have shifted quite a bit from original, my original thoughts on it. And I know that this was deliberated over and over and over. And that's a hard point for me, too, because that's why we have planning commission and planning directors. But a lot of things to me have changed. The, the lack of being able to use it for bikes makes a big difference. I still think there's a safety issue with the angled parking and the speeds that people are going. So, you know what, I'm going to decide at the very last minute, but I'd be happy to change the subject. And, and say that I would wholeheartedly agree with the second driveway as long as they have approval. I, I really did change the subject.
Third driveway?
Third, third driveway as long as there's approval for, to move the bus.
You know, you jumped from, from 12 to 24. There was no 21 that we went. We're going out of order, Mayor Protem.
I know, I wanted to. I didn't say it was going to be in order. I wanted to do something positive. I feel like it's been too negative and I wanted to do something positive.
As in the spirit of my light justing, I agree with you wholeheartedly. If Caltrans signs off on it, I see no reason whatsoever not to do it. I do want planning staff to walk us through that a little bit, but I don't think we heard much argument against it at this point if Caltrans is good with it.
No, going into the planning commission staff report that was published, the main concern was the conflict between the new driveway and the Samtrans bus stop. And Samtrans at that time had actually commented on their objection to the third driveway. Subsequent to that comment, you know, the day prior to the hearing, city staff met on the site with Samtrans staff, determined they were open to a relocation of the bus stop. That addresses our significant concerns and if all appropriate written approvals could be granted, including from Caltrans, to relocate the stop, staff has no objection to that. We would just ask that the city receive proof of that written approval before the construction of the third driveway.
Sure, and so we're conditioning the third driveway on Caltrans signing off on essentially is what's happening.
All public agency approvals, including Caltrans, correct?
Oh, all of them.
So the reason I jumped straight to Caltrans is that I know they had had a meeting with Samtrans the day of the planning commission or some such, and Samtrans tacitly seemed okay with it. Caltrans seems to me to be the, the big one to get the approval, so.
It's in the Caltrans right of way, exactly. So to effectuate that, we would need to delete condition of approval number 24, which says, reduce the number of driveways from three to two along Clarendon Road. And then we would need a new condition of approval, which staff proposes, would read, applicant shall demonstrate to the city in writing that all required approvals to relocate the bus stop have been granted prior to construction of the new third driveway on Clarendon Road.
And that would continue to be number 24 or would we make that number 52?
That would be a new condition number 51, I think it ends up being.
So 51 is already a new condition as per the planning commission meeting?
Right, there'd be a renumbering because we'd be deleting condition number 12, for example. In any case, the numbering isn't as important as noting that it would be a new condition of approval that would require that the applicant demonstrate to the city in writing that all required approvals to relocate the bus stop have been granted prior to construction of the new third driveway on Clarendon Road.
In a worst-case scenario in which Caltrans doesn't sign off on it, heaven forbid, and I'm not suggesting they won't, would it automatically revert to two driveways?
As that condition is written, I believe it would. There may be other ways to design the project to provide a self-service recycled water access with the two existing driveways, but the applicant, or the appellant, rather, noted at the planning commission hearing, they weren't in favor of that. And so, you know, we would hope that Caltrans would, would write the approval, but we can't guarantee that at this point in time.
And do we need to consider which direction the driveway goes?
If there are cars in the middle, it doesn't matter. Just, just to add on, I mean, yeah, I was going to ask if, if the flow changed and Caltrans did not say we could move the bus stop, is the bus stop okay there if we change the flow? So maybe, and if it is, then maybe the condition can just be that we change the flow and then if we can move Caltrans, great, we get two more parking spaces, but it's not necessarily a part of the condition.
That's a good question. Reversing the travel flow was one of the options discussed at the planning commission to help address some of the concerns. It was just one of several topics that was discussed, so maybe city engineer Yip can opine on that in just a moment.
So I, I believe there's still a desire to, to have the third driveway regardless. So our proposal to reverse the flow was to reverse it so we can have two driveways. That's my understanding.
Right, so I'm asking for a third option. So leave three i-driveways, but reverse the flow so that when you're exiting, you're not exiting in front of the bus where you can't see past the bus, right? You're exiting then behind the bus where you can see into the intersection.
But still with a third driveway?
With a third driveway. So are there, my question is, are there sightline issues if the bus stop stayed, but would the flow reversed?
Flow of the driveway would go east rather than west, so it would still be a third driveway.
Mayor, perhaps while that's being considered, I'm happy to jump back to the landscaping condition?
Yes, please.
Okay, trying to make it quick. Condition number nine, and we would add a second to last sentence that says, specifically, trees shall be installed along the Francisco Boulevard sidewalk to ensure disabled access is maintained. And then the condition would end, landscaping on the site shall be adequately maintained in helpful condition and replaced when necessary as determined by the planning director.
Lovely. And do we need to get those bumps, those wheel bumps in front of the spaces? Do we need a COA for that or is that de facto?
I don't know. I would need the city engineer's input on that when he can shift to that topic. I don't know what other potential right-of-way issues those could present if installed.
Okay.
Who else?
There's number 21.
That is?
So...
The asphalt. The asphalt.
Yeah, paved.
Yes, paved.
So...
Keep that in.
Yeah. What I mentioned, Adrian, that was a condition of approval for my...
Councilmember Bowles, is your book on your mute button?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, I'm tired. I'm not paying attention. The repaving all the way across the street was a condition of approval at my house, too. And when we got to that point in the project, I met with Public Works and found out they were just about to repave Monterey, and so they didn't make me do it. So there's a, that's why I kept asking when it might come up. So it might still come up, but it, but it is a typical condition of approval and I, I think that should stay.
I know the Water District was suggesting there might be a breach of agency to agency given that the school district was a place we dropped the ball. On the other hand, it has a new road next to it. And at the end of the day, what sways me is that we are not asking of the Water District what we don't ask of ourselves as we do the remodel of our campus, for what that's worth.
Mayor, if I, I think there was a question about the, the wheel stops, if they're needed or not?
Yeah.
For me, so I believe they are, they will still be needed, you know, regardless of how much they're going to push in unless they, they provide so much space that's going to push in for us to know that no matter what size of vehicle is parked there, it will not overhang. Even with the wheel stop, we would have to do a calculation to, to see what that dimension would need to be to, in order for us to not need a wheel stop there. But I would think it would be pretty significant if you were to...
With my little Corolla, I'm horrible about overhanging the lip of my car wherever I go, and I can't imagine with one of the bigger trucks. So are we saying that we need a condition of approval to ensure that or we don't need a condition of approval?
We will need to condition it so that the, in at least a, you know, it needs to be four and a half foot for the sidewalk, but it's a six-inch curb, is in our standards. So five foot to the face of the curb needs to be maintained.
So we will need a condition of approval to get that in there? Okay.
That is correct. And I think some of the dimensions they have mentioned, I will repeat what they said. They, they feel like maybe four-foot sidewalk, but in our standards, we have a four and a half foot minimum.
Yeah. Can we, can the condition just be that they work with you to find an acceptable solution and dimension?
Yes, that's fine.
And that there's definitely a wheel stop only because when I visit, I know that my car is going to go jutting into the right of way and I don't want a wheelchair to have to go around my car. I wish I were a better driver, really, I do.
What else?
That part I'm working on.
Fuel cover?
That's the last one. So we have consensus on...
Something about the fuel cover, right?
There is, that's number 32.
Mayor, there was one other minor revision needed to accommodate the third driveway, if you would allow me.
Of course.
So again, my numbering is a little bit off. I think it's shown as condition 26 in the packet. It begins with applicant shall install new driveway approach. So that condition would need to be modified to read as follows. Applicant shall install new driveway approach on all three, rather, on all driveways, parentheses, the three driveways on Clarendon Road, close parentheses, which must be ADA compliant with no more than 2% cross slope for a width of at least 48 inches. The transition from 2% out slope to the in slope on the driveways shall be sufficiently gradual to avoid vehicles bottoming out where the vehicle undersides scrape the pavement at the grade breaks.
And somewhere in the back of my mind is the voice of, well, the driveways that are already there, why are we modifying them? See if we play.
And are they potentially compliant already? Have, do we have that information?
Is that another one where there's a certain percentage of the site improvement or, please give us detail?
So they don't appear to meet the current standards? And the current standards, it's going to require a certain width behind the driveway apron, and it doesn't look apparent that they're, they're going to meet that with the current existing driveways right now.
Are there particular laws we are following by necessitating that or are we, well, let me leave the question there.
So we would at least have to meet the minimum width for ADA path of travel behind the driveway. So the driveway is not, you know, because ADA is going to have close to 15 to 18% slopes on it, so the area behind it needs to be at least three feet. But in our standards, we require more than that. It needs to be at least, I believe it's four in our standards.
For any site improvement or...
So we would...
I'm just asking for the legal triggers that necessitate it.
So we would trigger that if they were, we would trigger that for the new driveway. And as a...
was a significant project on the site and trying to increase disabled accessibility through and around the project site. A lot has been said about ensuring access for their customers to the new building or the modified building. And, you know, improving the accessibility with replacing those driveway approaches would expand accessibility in line with the city's standard plan. But is there a, you know, quantitative trigger? I don't think we have one to offer to you right now.
But there's enough nexus that we can put that COA in.
That's our opinion, yes. We are making a readily achievable improvement there relative to the overall project to improve accessibility, yes.
I'm okay with it.
I was just going to ask, since, since we don't know exactly what's there, I think we're guessing a little bit, looking at pictures and so forth, and instead of saying that they have to replace the two driveways, can we say, work with Public Works to ensure they meet our standards and accessibility standards?
Yes, that works for me.
Number 32, we have not discussed, which is the covering for the fuel station. So my understanding was there are state, county, local, my aunt is going to bring it up later.
I think we, I think we need to just leave it in there because it's, it's, it is a requirement generally of building code and, and through the, through the process, there's, there's possibly the opportunity of altering their, their current plan to reduce the coverage and then sort of letting, letting the Water District work it out, you know, through the building permit phase with the approval of planning.
So what I suggested earlier was making sure to put it clearly in number 32 that if it doesn't, you know, depending on which way the math falls, that's what necessitates 32 or not.
That's what I was going to say, because the way it reads right now, it doesn't say that. It says you're doing it. And we, maybe it will be warranted and maybe it will not, depending on the final plan things.
Right, so in relation to that, if the council wanted clarification or clarity, I would propose adding to the end. So it says, prior to final inspection, applicant shall install a cover for the fuel area. However, if the city engineer determines during building permit review that new and replaced impervious surface is less than 50% of existing impervious surface, this condition shall not apply.
Okay. Have we fully given direction at this point?
I think you're still waiting on the driveway sightline answer.
On the what?
The driveway sightline answer if the bus is still there.
Oh, I thought we...
Or maybe I missed it and zoned out for a minute.
So if, if the bus is still there, there, there will still be a sight distance issue unless they reverse the flow of the traffic?
So either Caltrans approves or they reverse the flow of traffic is what I'm hearing?
That is...
And they were okay reversing the flow of traffic, so I'd like to...
I will say that the one slight concern, which to me is not a concern, but the idea that if the bus stop remains, that's two parking spots that aren't there. Again, I think we've hashed this out pretty good at this point. That I'm not worried about those two spots at this point, but just wanted to throw that out there.
I think we all want the bus stop to move, but I don't want them to lose their drive-thru if the bus has to remain.
I really like that amenity.
I agree.
I think it's brilliant.
And then just one follow-up question. I thought I heard you mention that the corner bulbout needed to be amended, so that's a change to their plan based on Sam Trans's comments, if the bus stop is staying.
So there is a concern with the bulbout also, though, because it is preventing parking there. So if we were to amend it and remove the bulbout, that means that a parking space returns that location, and now that prevents some...
Can you bring the site plan back up?
So if you could zoom into...
There's a better...
Yeah. So in that bulbout, that if we were to amend it and remove that bulbout, that parking space would potentially return, I believe. And now a vehicle parked there is preventing some line of sight to the vehicles who are coming out.
Well, right now, it's painted red. Maybe that's because of the bus, but it's also awfully close to the corner. Would we really allow a parking space there?
I think we'll have to review, but then it would likely remain painted red then in this situation.
Okay. Well, I think that can be sorted out between you and Caltrans, and that we don't necessarily...
Personally, I favor a parking spot over a bulbout, but that's me.
But I think it's too dangerous by the corner.
Oh, I see. So what I heard was, once we give the fullness of our direction, staff is going to need a few moments to figure out the conditions and the findings.
Yes, and I would just like to go through... And I know that, you know, you've done sort of the straw vote, but I would like to go back over all of these to get clarity on exactly what the council is directing in terms of modifying conditions of approval. And then, once we get clarity on that, we will take a break, and I can work with the planning director to determine what amendments need to be made to the resolution and the conditions of approval.
Should I just go through and tell you deny, modify, uphold?
Just go through the way you started. Start with condition number 11.
Sure. So I have for number 11 to deny?
Deny with added language to that condition of approval, in my understanding...
Oh, right. Amend.
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
To state after applicant shall submit a request to the city manager's office, which requests that the city work with the applicant and then go back to the other language to relocate the TSPP space. That was the language that we discussed.
Correct.
According to Councilmember Beer, yes.
To go further back, staff recommended amending number nine.
Oh, yes. I did not get that amendment. Staff, can you read that for me?
Yes. So condition number nine, second to last... Well, the last sentence just preceding it, we would add a new second-to-last sentence that says, specifically, "trees shall be installed along the Francisco Boulevard sidewalk to ensure disabled access is maintained." And then the condition would conclude, as it's written currently, "landscaping on the site shall be adequately maintained in healthful condition and replaced when necessary as determined by the planning director."
That sounds good. I did not get all that, but you have it. I have the first one, you have the second.
I believe number 12, we're upholding but modifying. Planning Director, did you...
Yes. So that condition currently requires removal of angled parking from the plan set, and so we would simply delete that condition of approval.
Entirely.
Entirely.
Oh, and then nine and 26 are the modifications? Is that how that works?
I'm sorry, Mayor, one more time, please?
Once we delete 12, number nine and number 26 are the modific... No, that's a different thing. Okay, sorry.
Yes, but we... Let's not worry, Planning Director, let's not renumber them now.
Right.
We need to refer to this in this portion as the conditions of approval as they read in the staff report.
Correct.
So the record's clear.
Right.
Moving on to 21? We're just flatly denying 21? Number 24 was the one that we're deleting, and then there's going to be a new condition on the back end. We're also modifying number 26 because we're deleting number 24.
And what was that modification on 26?
To make it for all three driveways rather than just the new driveway? The ADA?
And did the Planning Director have language for that?
So I have the language that I can read. However, I'm not sure I completely grasped Councilmember Bowles's requested modification about working with the applicant.
I think when you first read it, you just said, "replace all the driveways," and I just want to leave room that maybe they don't need replacing if they're found to be compliant.
I see.
Satisfaction of the engineer or something like that?
And then number 32, we're modifying?
Well, let's go back to 26. I still have not heard what that language...
Okay. Pardon me.
I'm not sure. I think what I... Is the only change what Councilmember Bowles is suggesting, which is applicant shall ensure that all driveways meet accessibility standards? Is that...
So there's two parts, essentially. We need to update condition 26 to reflect that there are going to be three driveways. So I'll read that first. So the condition would change to applicant shall install new driveway approach on all driveways, parentheses, "the three driveways on Clarendon Road," end parentheses, "which must be ADA compliant with no more than 2% cross-slope for a width of at least 48 inches. The transition from 2% outslope to the inslope on the driveways shall be sufficiently gradual to avoid vehicles bottoming out where the vehicle undersides scrape the pavement at the grade breaks." And then we would add another sentence, "however, new driveway approaches shall not be required if they meet ADA requirements as determined by the city engineer."
If the existing driveways meet?
"However, new driveway approaches shall not be required at the existing driveways if they meet ADA requirements as determined by the city engineer."
Did we get the changes on number 32?
I was reading 26. 32, adding a new sentence after the condition as it's written. "However, if the city engineer determines during building permit review that new and replaced impervious surface is less than 50% of existing impervious surface, this condition shall not apply."
And then I think, Christian, you said there needed to be a new condition about outside agencies approving moving the bus stop?
So, yes, there would be a new condition. "applicant shall demonstrate to the city in writing that all required approvals to relocate the bus stop have been granted prior to construction of the new third driveway on Clarendon Road. In the event all required approvals cannot be obtained, applicant shall reverse the traffic flow in the recycled water filling area." And then there was also a new condition of approval related to the angled parking. "applicant shall install and maintain wheel stops at all angled parking spaces to the satisfaction of the city engineer."
That's everything I had. City Attorney, do you have what you need?
Yes, now we need a break.
Yep.
Okay. Before we take our break, I just wanted to say that I'm truly charmed by the efforts made by the Water District and the city. And despite those moments in which heads were butted, I think that we did due diligence listening to one another by the end of the day, and that we made a good faith effort to ensure that all of our mutual concerns were addressed to the best of our individual capabilities. I just wanted to take a moment to point out that our Director of Public Works does in fact live in Pacifica, as well as our city clerk, who has for, I want to say lifetime, but at least a very long time. And I'm not sure how many others of our staff who have in some way or another contributed to this also live in Pacifica, and I want to make sure that that is pointed out as we now take a recess. Before we take a recess, it is 11:42. Our last motion was to extend until midnight. I don't know if we need help from staff as to whether or not our other items can be pushed off to a different meeting, but that could inform as to how much longer this meeting should be...
And then just really quick, we're going to keep the good faith going, right?
We have not taken public comments, just in general. We need to at least do that, I think.
No.
No, we've had public...
We did already.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. She means for not on the agenda, yes. Absolutely, not on the agenda. Council comm, staff comm, those are the things that I don't think we can...
Right, that has to be...
It doesn't need to take very long. So my question is, those last two remaining consideration items, can those be pushed off to a later date, or do we need to hear them tonight?
I'll need to check with Chief Sarah Sua about the police military equipment in case there are specific notification requirements that drive it to today. But the meeting minutes item can be pushed to a later date. And so during our break, I could... I could check with Chief Sarah Sua and...
So I'm just going to move to extend the meeting to 12:30?
Okay.
Motion and a second, please vote.
That vote passes unanimously. The motion was made by Mayor Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Beer.
And City Attorney, will 10 minutes be sufficient, or do you need more time?
I'm sorry, how many minutes?
10.
That's fine.
Okay. So we are taking an 11-minute recess. We will reconvene at 12... No, 11:55. So, yes.
Yes, we do.
Thank you for your deliberations and for that clarity. I think we, we, Planning Director and I have worked and have come up with some amendments. I will be reading the amendments to the resolution, the, the general part of the resolution, and then Planning Director Murdoch will recite the actual changes to the conditions of approval, which are also in the resolution, but we're sort of splitting up the, the amendments. But this is all one motion that somebody will be making, and the motion will just be as amended per staff and the city attorney. So with regard to the resolution, we will be amending the title slightly to say, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Denying in Part and Upholding in Part the Appeal," and "Upholding the Planning Commission's Approval of the Coastal Development Permit," and then the rest of the language stays the same. So we're just amending, adding in part and up, denying in part and upholding in part. Then when we go to the first, the second, "Be it further resolved," and we have all those bases for denial, we will be retaining Basis One, we will be striking Basis Two in its entirety. That's a long basis, so I need to go to the next basis. Give me a minute. We are retaining Basis Three. We are then retain, eliminating, striking out Basis Four, retaining Basis Five, and then we are adding a additional resolve clause that will state, "Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica hereby grants the appeal with regard to conditions of approval numbers 12 and 24." And then the remainder of that portion will stay until we hit the actual conditions of approval, and then Planning Director Murdoch will begin, I believe, with, with condition of approval nine.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Kenyon, so condition number nine is the first condition that would be modified by the City Council. We would add a second-to-last sentence that says specifically, "Trees shall be installed along the Francisco Boulevard sidewalk to ensure disabled access is maintained." And condition of approval number 11, at the sentence beginning accordingly, "Prior to commencement of any construction activity on the project site or commencement of any preparatory work prior to construction activity that requires access to the physical location of the TSPP space located on Francisco Boulevard adjacent to the project site, applicant shall submit a request to the city manager's office for the city to work with the applicant to relocate the TSPP space to another location deemed suitable in the city manager's sole discretion. The remainder of the condition would remain as drafted." Condition number 12 will be deleted in its entirety. Condition 24 would be deleted. Condition 26 would be modified to read as follows. Applicant shall install new driveway approaches on all driveways, parentheses, the three driveways on Clarendon Road, close parentheses, "which must be ADA compliant with no more than 2% cross-slope for a width of at least 48 inches. The transition from 2% out slope to the in slope on the driveways shall be sufficiently gradual to avoid vehicles bottoming out where the vehicle undersides scrape the pavement at the grade breaks. However, new driveway approaches shall not be required at the existing driveways if they meet ADA requirements as determined by the city engineer." Then there would be a new condition of approval. Applicant shall demonstrate to the city in writing that all required approvals to relocate the bus stop have been granted prior to construction of the new third driveway on Clarendon Road. In the event all required approvals cannot be obtained, applicant shall reverse the traffic flow in the recycled water filling area. There would be a new condition of approval. Applicant shall install and maintain wheel stops at all angled parking spaces to the satisfaction of the city engineer. And there would be a new condition of approval being read for the first time. Prior to issuance of a building permit, applicant shall execute an agreement with the city to provide public access rights for the realigned sidewalk and angled parking spaces along Francisco Boulevard to the satisfaction of the city engineer and city attorney.
And the explanation for that is that because, if, if the council wants a clarification.
Yes, please.
Because now we are actually moving the sidewalk onto district property, so we need to continue to allow right-of-way access to the public in order to use the sidewalk. So that's what that is about.
Thank you very much for the explanation. It's appreciated.
City Attorney, can you give me the language again for the motion?
The motion would be to approve. Let's see, we should go to the staff report. Yeah, so the move to deny the appeal in part and uphold the appeal in part, which upholds the Planning Commission's Approval of Coastal Development Permit, CDP 432, 435-22, Permit for Site Development Permit, PSD 85722, Use Permit 13022, and Parking Exception PE1.
She's trying to write it down, so you're going to.
No, it's okay, I'll just say so moved.
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry, that's.
No, please, please go right ahead.
I just want you to say so moved. And finding that North Coast County Water District, acting as lead agency, has determined the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act by adopting the resolution included
Hannah, with the motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Foles, the motion as stated, as amended, is, passes unanimously.
Congratulations, you have a project.
The process works.
Okay. So, city attorney, shall we amend our agenda before we continue?
I'm sorry, amend it for what?
To move the two items.
Microphone.
Twenty-four, to move items twenty...
We don't, we don't need a motion if you're not going to take any action unless you want to move it to a date certain, which I understand the city manager, we don't have a date.
No, to be decided.
We'll move it to a future date.
We, we don't need to make any motion. So, just, the council's just not taking any action.
Okay.
So, you could just adjourn the meeting.
So, we are going to do public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, we will not be taking action on the consideration items tonight. We are going to have public comment, whatever council comment they'd like to make and staff comment. I have two cards from the public. Tyler House and Suzanne Moore. I do not see Suzanne Moore in the audience, but I'll give her the...
Mayor Big Stick, Suzanne Moore is online.
Oh, she's online.
Okay, so we'll start with Tyler House. Uksumi Haas. And Mr. Haas, thank you for sticking around. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah, Haas, thank you. Thanks for having me. Good evening, council. My name is Tyler Haas and I'm here on behalf of Civic Bell. We're a locally owned and operated civic technology social platform connecting local level government officials like yourselves to their verified constituencies. We might take the visual appearance of a Facebook or a Nextdoor of sorts, but we have a couple key distinctions that make us a better alternative way to productively engage with local constituencies. The main one is that we use a verification system to ensure that all people using Civic Bell are real humans, not bots, and do reside factually within your district. And so, the goal being to altruistically create a higher quality community engagement and deliberation amongst a community. And I think what better evening than tonight, just to see the complexities that it takes in trying to come to these decisions, especially at a local governmental level, but that the decision at the end of the day is best made when involving the local community. And so, what Civic Bell could potentially offer is in contentious moments like these, it's another outlet that you can asynchronously engage those who can't stay until, what time do we have now, 12, 13 a.m. to continue giving comment, right? It's a, it's a way that people in the community can give verified, vetted feedback on surveys in a bulletin board format or merely the council could disseminate information. We have an established presence in the coast side. We're, we're based out of Palo Alto and we've got presence in Santa Clara County, Mountain View, and now in the coast side with Assemblymember Mark Berman using Civic Bell even earlier, well, I was going to say today, but I guess yesterday, to put out a survey, ask him constituents what he thought, or what they think about some upcoming calendar items and community engagement events. Members of the Midcoast Community Council, Montara Water, and we've been working with members of Hapman Bay City Council, although they're still working on that last step. So, this is a public invitation to the council, to other community members and community government officials, that Civic Bell is and will be free for the coast side and we'd love to have you guys come on and join and at least check out what we're up to. So, if anyone's interested, you can talk to me after the meeting, talk to me now, I guess that's not your main. Or I, my email's Tyler@CivicBell.com. You can go to our website, about.civicbell.com should suffice. Or just CivicBell.com and you can see some of the recent engagements that people have been using, like Assemblymember Berman's multiple posts today. So, if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out and thank you again for the time and I wish everyone a good night.
Thank you. Good night. I do have this card from Suzanne Moore and I will take it in order despite it being a virtual exchange of sorts and followed by Anita Reese.
We have one raised hand for Suzanne Moore.
Suzanne Moore, and thank you all for your hard work and endurance this evening. Job well done.
Suzanne, Suzanne, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Hold on for a moment, we're experiencing significant feedback from your connection. I want to check in to see if we can clear that up.
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's fine.
It's, it's pretty gnarly feedback on our end, so... Yeah, while we work on that, let's, let's have Anita come up and we'll circle back when our tech have looked at what's going on there.
I want to say, "Good morning."
Good morning!
Sorry. Anita Reese at the Pacifica Resource Center. I just wanted to share that PRC continues to be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 9:00 to 5:00, Wednesday, 9:00 to 7:00, and Friday, 9:00 to 1:00. We're closed for lunch Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 1:30. And we are generally open one Saturday a month, although we are skipping the month of September, given Fog Fest and Palma Palooza on September 30th. I wanted to share that our back-to-school program is wrapping up. We served so far 216 Pacifica youth. That is a 60% increase from last year. We provided backpacks and $50 Target gift cards for, for school supplies. We were able to get the backpacks at cost from Samsonite, which allowed us to increase the amount of gift card amount that we were able to provide, so really excited about that. If anybody, even though it's more than the 200 we had as a goal, if anybody else still needs support, we will provide support. We had generous donations from the community of backpacks and gift cards and so that allowed us to serve even more client, more families. Our next grocery distribution is on August 23rd at the American Legion Hall. If folks are not already signed up, you can arrive at 4 p.m. to get groceries, otherwise come at your appointment time, please. And if you need groceries in the interim, please call for an appointment. It just makes it a lot easier for us to serve as many people as possible. We are still having challenges keeping our pantry full and for that reason, we want to make sure folks make appointments so we can serve them. We're also looking for a temporary grocery driver, so if, it's really hard even to find a temp position right now. So, if anybody is interested in a job Monday through Thursday, probably seven, eight hours a day, we could really use your help. It's at least a couple of months. We were thinking it was just going to be the summer, but we will be extending it. The other thing is, I wanted to mention our safe parking program continues to be full. We do currently have two folks on the waitlist and since June, another one of our client entered into shelter, which allowed us to have another opening, reducing our waitlist. So, we are seeing some movement, although the movement is slower because we're trying to move people directly from their motor homes into housing. And I want to thank the city and the Pacifica PD for just the extra support to reduce the harassment that was happening for folks who are in the safe parking program. Honking continues, but we have cameras set up and we've been reporting the folks who are honking to PD, so hopefully we'll be able to get that figured out as well. If you need any support, contact PRC, 650-738-7470, or email at info@pacresourcecenter.org or our website, pacresourcecenter.org.
Thank you. Okay, coming back to Suzanne Moore, have we been able to clear up the feed?
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
It does not sound great. Would you be willing to, would you be willing to call it by telephone?
No, but if you guys give me an added minute next time, then I'll, I'll bargain for that then.
I wish I could hear the bargain better through the haze of the sound of your voice, but I can't. So, I don't think, city attorney is giving me a look indicating it may be difficult to navigate.
Oh, I'll remind you.
Yeah, I don't know that the reminder will facilitate it. So, would you be willing to call back in? We can give you a phone number.
Um, oh, oh, gosh, no. No, I think it's just too late, guys. Thanks anyway.
Okay.
It's just too late, guys. Thanks anyway.
Well, please email us your comments so that we can at least read what we would have been listening to. That's the last card I have. Is there anybody else on the phone line? Okay, so we're closing public comment at this time and bring it back to council for council communication. The time is 12:20.
I went a whole bunch of places, but the most important place I went was Relay for Life. I want to tell everybody, do what you're supposed to do, do self-exams, get a mammogram, men and women, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Anyone else want to go?
Went to a bunch of meetings, too. I'm not going to tell you about them all. The airport roundtable had a discussion about the FAA reauthorization and one of the things they're fighting for is local control for decisions about drone package delivery and air taxis, which just sound terrifying to allow our federal government to make those decisions, so hopefully they listen to us. And I went to the San Mateo County Dems picnic and they're going to be doing voter registration at Fog Fest, so if anybody wants to help improve our democracy.
I'll go ahead and go, thanks. What did I do? A lot of things, a couple things. Coast Pride. I want to encourage everyone to go see the Broadway play Tina, and if you can't make it to Tina, then go to Aladdin or Lion King because a, a portion of the proceeds is going to Coast Pride. We have a partnership with SF Broadway, so we're super excited about that. They're bringing lots of programs into our city from Pescadero to Pacifica. We have youth programs and Aging Well and parent groups, so please try to support Coast Pride. Overdose Awareness Night is August 31st at 6 o'clock. It's being held at, what is that called? My brain has gone. Not the dumps. What do we call the dumps?
Oh.
Muscle Rock.
Muscle Rock. It's that Muscle Rock. That's it. I can't talk anymore.
I attended a lot of meetings as well and I traveled to a conference that was excellent on, it was called the California Adaptation Forum. I had the honor of participating in a panel discussion on adaptation and sea level rise and phased approaches. And I'm working on a number of stakeholder meetings with different cities and counties on their experiences and needs around determining how they will approach sea level rise. Did that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. And so, that was the most important stuff. Yeah.
Okay. First of all, Ukraine and Maui. Maui, go to HawaiiCommunityFoundation.org to give to the Maui Strong Fund. Attended PRC meeting with the things that PRC really needs are can openers, anything that's a meal in a can, like chili, even rice would be really helpful. Their budget passed. Palma Palooza's coming up on 9:30, sign up for that. Went to Relay for Life. Jack reflected on his chemotherapy. I also talked about Jonathan Cordero. Sue made her comments and I also reflected on my grandmother who passed from cancer last month. PCE surplus money subcommittee, there were a couple meetings around that. We'll make recommendations probably in a month or so, but we're still kind of nascent in that subcommittee. LAFCO, Broadmoor continues to be the big topic. We weren't able to hear the East Palo Alto Santeri sewer district this time around. Bruce Latimer, show number 1,000, was an honor to be at. Peninsula Clean Energy meeting on the 27th. Citizens Advisory Committee was talked about at length as well as regionalizing distribution outside of California, so there was a robust discussion around that. There will be more to come on that later. Council of Cities in East Palo Alto with their wetlands restoration, which used to be a dump itself and is now this beautiful space right on the waterfront. We released our episode of the mayor's office in which Mary and I had a conversation about emotional intelligence. The conversation I have with Ray Mueller is currently in the can and will be out for everyone's viewing pleasure, I hope, in a couple of weeks or so. Went to a meeting at the Freemasons Lodge here in town honoring first responders and I was grateful to be able to attend that with Captain Clements and Officers Mansker, Shidi, and Martinez. Cal City, there was a Cal City's mayor's roundtable about renter tenant protections that I had time to watch while driving, so I did that. Of note, one of the first questions asked was, "How late did your council meeting go to last night?" And which immediately the response was 2 a.m. and everyone else commiserated that apparently this is typical, so I want everyone to know that we're getting off light and we have it really easy. There was a meeting later that day about county Measure A funds. I attended and gave feedback on that. Our Council of Cities meeting this past Friday was about CORA, which is Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. It's a safe space for anybody experiencing domestic violence, and I mean anybody, it's not gender specific. The 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline is 1-800-799-7233. Again, 24/7, 1-800-799-7233 if you need help. You can also go to coraisupport.org. And finally, due to the passing of Rudy Mizetti, we will be adjourning in the honor of Rudy Mizetti not too long from now. City manager, would you like more than two minutes to give a staff? Okay, and so then, staff report, please.
Thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Just a couple brief updates. One is I attended Rotary last week and presented on project updates and budget and strategic plan. We issued a press release today about the new economic development manager, Tara Schiff, who will begin next Monday with the city. We're excited. Won't go into her bio, read the press release and take a moment to appreciate the two new pictures that are framed on the wall behind the staff table there and the third long panoramic will be in between the two. That completes my comments.
It's lovely seeing it slowly coming to focus. Okay, not to belabor the last minute and a half we have left. We are adjourning this meeting in the honor of Rudy Mizetti. I did not know the man personally particularly well, but perhaps someone else on council might want to tell a story? And if, Mary? No? Okay.
I just want to acknowledge all that he did in building that business and to, you know, what an impact it has on so many Pacificans. Every cupcake at every birthday party for my children, you know, weddings, everything. It's so much a part of our, our city and the life of our city and so many people that come from out of the area specifically to visit Mizetti's. And so, you know, the spirit that he used to create that business will go on. It's just really such a tragic loss at, at relatively young age and so our hearts go out to his family.
His family's beautiful, too.
So, with that, thank you, Rudy Mizetti, and meeting is adjourned at 12:29.